All right, council. I think we're about to begin our continuation of the public hearings on budget. If you could turn on your video so we can start the meeting. All right, city clerk, will you do roll call of the June 15th, 2020 budget hearings for the 2021-22 budget? It's a continuation. The following departments will be heard in the following order: airport, fax, fire, and police.
Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sbarza. Councilmember Kerbasi. Councilmembers Gloria. Council Vice President Capriolio. President Arias.
Here.
All right, folks, just a reminder, we put some additional measures in place to avoid some of the distractions or attempted distractions of last week. That will result in council members and city staff being able to mute, unmute video and video yourself. So with that, keep in mind that we get a lot of audio feedback, so be cautious of your phones being so close to your computer and whispering conversations that we will be hearing on CMAC and the internet as we're proceeding. With that, I ask city manager, you have the floor with the airport department's budget.
Okay, great. Good morning, everybody. Henry, is your video up also for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, we're bringing in Kevin. We're just going to rotate into departments. So if you could just be patient in between departments, I'd appreciate it. And I have the director, Kevin Michael, right here now. So Kevin. Come on in, sit down wherever you want. Yep, we're ready. Go right ahead. Can you all allow us to share a screen, please? I don't know if it's Gavin or council president. Great, thank you.
Council President, council, good morning. Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation, I've got with me my, the airport CFO, you know, del senori, to answer any questions you may have. As you're aware, we've experienced a similar situation as the, as the rest of the nation with regard to airports. Not much traffic April and May. It's, it's coming back. We were down about 7% of normal. Now we're up over, well, close to 30% of normal and we expect to be over 40% in July. So things are recovering on the aviation side. The CARES Act dollars specific to airports is a bit unique in that it allows airports to use it in any way they, they feel they need to with regard to replacing lost revenue. So with that, we're able to use those CARES Act dollars to get us through fiscal '21 as we continue to recover. We believe we'll be at a full recovery by the end of fiscal '21, probably about 70% recovery in the third, third to fourth quarter of fiscal '21. So, and just a note, the international flights are all back. Aero Mexico was the last one to return. They're, they're 100% capacity starting July 1. So everything is from an airport perspective and aviation perspective pointing in the right direction. With that, I'll just kind of pause and, and, and open it up for any questions that anybody has with regard to what's going on at the airport and how we intend to navigate through this next fiscal year. Thank you.
All right, council, is that the full presentation of the city staff?
It is at this point in time. We're just ready to answer any questions you may have regarding to what's happening out at the airport.
All right, with that, we're going to go to public comment first. If there's anybody in the public wishing to address accounts on this item, please raise your hand and we, you will be identified for three minutes to address a council on the Fresno International Airport's budget. The first person we see up is Lisa Flores. You are being unmuted. You have the floor for three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me, Miguel?
Yes.
Okay, well, my big concern is over the weekend with what limited time I had looking for the budget for the line item so I could actually see what the budget was for the airport, for the police, and also for the city council budget. I think I found city council budget and I'll come back and address that later. But when I went to the agenda, I couldn't find line item budgets and I'm just kind of wondering why. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. And just for your clarity, the city staff is not providing budget line items during this budget presentation. What you see in the screen is the amount of budget information that has been provided to the council at this time.
No, I wanted to clarify to council president, Henry, we do have the line item detail that we're utilizing for this continuing resolution up on the website. And Henry, do you want to direct the, the public to where that is?
Yes, if, if the public goes to, again, the city's website, you want to go into the finance section of our website. And then within there, there is a subsection related to budget. And under budget, we have included the 2020 adopted line item detail. So it is available by department.
Thank you, Henry. Henry, can you make sure you email that information to all the council?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, folks, given the experience and the behavior of some of the public, we're going to go ahead and move on from public comment to council discussion on the matter. All right, let me start off with council vice president, Mr. Capriolio. Paul, would you like to address the council, the city airport budget? Do you have any questions? There you are. Go ahead, council vice president.
Thank you. My comments are the usual, which are well deserved, as that is Kevin and his team are fans. They put our airport on the map. We're an international airport. We have so many good things going on out there, including our most recent improvements that the council approved. And Director Michael, please, enjoy what you're doing and their team, give them my best wishes and highest compliments for a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, with that, we're going to go to council members. We'll go by district councilwoman Soria. Do you have any questions for the staff on this budget?
Thank you. Before I move on to the questions, first of all, I think that it is important to note for the public that we all condemn those, you know, racist remarks, but I want to ask ISD, is there any way that we can track who are these individuals? Whatever they are, I just feel that not only are they extremely inappropriate, but if there is something that we can do, because I think last time when people came on, they said, "We need to kill all the N." And so I feel like those are threats and we should take that seriously, you know, and go beyond just the fact that we're going to call out and condemn these type of statements. So ISD and the police department, can, can we address that? Like, are we able to check these individuals?
ISD will respond to your question.
As Marilda, what we're doing is we're tracking IP addresses of everybody that's making a connection to these meetings. And we will make those available to the police department when we're done, as well as any information they may have entered, like email address or names when they registered for the webinar. So there is some information that we will be able to provide to PD on those users, yes.
Okay, and we did the same for last week?
Last week, I have to go back and look at the records because it was a different meeting. I'm not sure what information was captured. But in these meetings, the webinars, all of their IP information is being captured.
Well, whatever information we did get from last time, I hope that we follow through with it and then that the council gets an update at whatever point is appropriate. I just think.
Working with PD and I'll let you know when I find out.
It is very disturbing.
Thank you, councilwoman. We'll refer to IT and police department and brief the council in close session at the next opportunity.
Thank you. Then before I ask on the airports, on the line item budget that you guys are referring to, is that an updated, like, reflecting the line items of to what we've spent? Or is it just the same line item from last year?
Councilmember Soria, the line item that's available again on the website, it says of last year's version because we're submitting a continuing resolution that is the basis of the resolution.
Okay, even though the monies may have been spent differently or there's additional dollars?
Possible.
It doesn't reflect those changes throughout the year? Okay. Just so the public knows, so it is last year's budget doesn't reflect kind of the changes that we've made in the last whatever months since we adopted the budget. Okay, thank you. Kevin, thank you for providing the information and also providing the supplement on the COVID-19. Appreciate that. That was very informative for me. I did want to ask in terms of the vacant positions, what positions are those that are vacant and how much of the money that we have yet to spend are salary savings?
So we've got, let's grab this in front of me here, 14 vacant positions. Some of these positions, well, let's step back a second. The CARES Act dollars plus the revenue we anticipate getting throughout this fiscal year will cover our costs for the entire fiscal year, assuming all positions are open. Now, that said, we have a number, we have 14 vacancies. Some of those vacancies are more tied to activity level, meaning, you know, how busy we are. And so we're proposing to keep a number of vacancies, eight or nine, I think it's eight, unfilled through, at least until we get to a 50% to 60% activity level. That'll further help us and give us additional cushion. There are some positions, about five or six, that, that are not tied to activity level, but tied to just FAA compliance inspections, safety, airfield maintenance workers, or even if we have no flights, that work still occurs. So we are proposing, we are working with the administration to hopefully get those filled here in the near future. But there's about eight positions and that represents about 8% of our, just under 8% of our total positions to keep vacant, at least at this point in time.
Did we have to lay off folks due to COVID?
No, we don't anticipate laying anybody off at all. In fact, one of the three major policies of the airport's COVID dollars is staff retention. So we're very, very cognizant of that. And, and so we, we, again, our budget is predicated on everything being filled. So not only do we not have to lay anybody off, we don't have to have any reduced hours. But, but we do know that we should keep a number of positions free and open because we just don't need them because we're not, we're not at the same activity level as we were last year.
Okay, and on the federal relief dollars that the airports received, these dollars are not, don't have a short deadline to be spent like the general fund or the COVID-19 federal relief CARES Act money that we received as a city, the 92 million, right?
Correct. They have a four-year timeframe. It's treated as an AIP FAA grant and that's a four-year cycle. So we intend to use, get $13 million. And we're proposing to use 3.2 million for debt service, 2 million to pay utilities, and 7.8 million for personnel costs through the course of fiscal year '21.
So so we're not using them this year, but we, we are plugging it in for the following couple of years or three, four years that we can spend? Is that what we're doing?
Kind of. So for fiscal '20, this current fiscal year, we are not proposing to use any CARES Act dollars. We had enough revenue generated through the, through the, you know, nine to 10 months of this year to be able to cover all of our costs without having to use any CARES Act dollars. That's preserving the dollars for fiscal '21. So, so right now, we're proposing to use all the dollars in fiscal '21. Now, if we don't need to, then some of that can be extended into fiscal '22 if necessary. Right now, the way the recovery is going with the aviation industry and the forecast that we've got, we don't anticipate at this point in time having an issue moving into fiscal '22 and '23 and beyond.
Okay, so seems like we're, we're in good shape there. Are any of the dollars that you guys received through either the CARES Act or because you don't have to tap into the other revenues that we do get, are we able to do some kind of workforce program tailored to airports work? I know that in the past, you guys have successfully used the internship program and we've talked about how your guys' department has really taken advantage of some of those dollars that we put for our young people. Can you speak to that?
So I'm sorry, could you briefly, one more time?
I'm just wondering, with the investments that are coming in from the federal government to kind of keep our airports successful, is there any opportunity to do some kind of workforce, you know, type of program? I know that in the past, the airports has taken advantage of the, you know, the internship, the paid internship program. I know that you guys, that's how you guys have hired a number of our young people after the fact. So I'm just wondering, given the fact that we got the federal CARES Act for the airport and we've been doing reasonably or pretty well in terms of our revenues, is there a flexibility there to kind of expand on workforce within the airports department to give people opportunities to, to get a job? And I only bring that up because as, as we know, jobs is a big issue for the city of Fresno and our unemployment rate has, has gone up. And so if there's an opportunity to, to create these job opportunities, I think that we should be looking at that.
So the, the CARES Act dollars is treated as regular airport revenue. So, you know, whether it's CARES Act dollars or other revenue that we get, it's all treated the same. So with regard to meeting our needs through the, the intern program, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we will continue to do that as long as we have funds to do that with. So, so yeah, we, we, the bottom line is CARES Act dollars can be used for any purpose that we would normally use airport revenue for. So if we have a need later on this year or interns, that's possible. Like, so, so.
You know, Kevin, I also think it's important to see that we know we are in plane fare right now versus where they were last year because I don't want this false understanding that revenues are, are, are status quo because we're not. And even though they are improving, I think it's important for Kevin to talk to you about what riders we had, like, for instance, what's in April as a benchmark. So do you mind going into that a little bit?
So, yeah, so we, as, as everybody knows, we were on a record, I mean, year after year records, and through mid-March, we were on that same pace. Second half of March, things dropped off immediately. They dropped off from, let's say, when you compare it to 2019 numbers, we, let's look at the month of April. We ended up April at 7% of normal, okay? And then when you look at May, we are a little higher than that. Now we're closing in on 30% in June. So it'll, it'll take some while for us to get this recovery going, hence the need for the CARES Act dollars that Congress put in place. So we are cautiously optimistic. You know, the flexibility of the CARES Act dollars means that fiscal '21, we're going to be just perfectly okay. But we are watching every dollar we spend. We are suspending all cash funded capital work, meaning discretionary work that we may have thought we want to do. We're suspending, again, cash funded, not projects that are all financed and is already in place, other projects are already underway, et cetera. Yeah, we're moving forward with those. But, and, and again, the positions we want to keep open, we want to keep open to preserve every dollar we can possibly preserve. Because even though the forecast is looking, you know, pretty good, and again, from an airport perspective, when we get to a 70% level, we can function without any federal aid at all. And we anticipate being at a 70% level perhaps as soon as this, the holiday season. So it's pointing in the right direction, but you never know what's going to happen, right? So, and again, when, when we talk in the context of airports and the ridership, it's based on airline bookings. It's based on the airline schedule. It's not, it's not so much as a guess to try and estimate what's happening down the road. They actually know who's buying tickets and how busy they're going to be. So it's a, it's a little bit of a, more of a known factor compared to other, other governmental entities throughout the country. But still, we're taking a very measured and cautious approach to how we spend the money through this fiscal year.
So if we don't use some of those dollars, do we still get to keep them? Or how does that work?
You mean the CARES Act dollars? So if we don't use the full 13 million, it's a, we don't, we don't actually have the 13 million. It's a reimbursable program. So, so we may, let's say we use 11 million throughout the course of fiscal '21. 2 million are still there in the pot. So if, if we need to use it in fiscal '22, we will. We don't anticipate that being the case, but, but again, it's reimbursable only, so month by month, how much did we need to use, so forth. So it'll be a gradual use through the entire fiscal year.
Understood. Okay, thank you. And then the last question, just on capital projects. We underwent, you know, the big Fresno airports expansion program, the, the parking lot and the second terminal. How is that going? Has that been impacted by COVID-19?
So no impact on COVID-19. The garage, the funding is, the bonds are sold, the funding is already in place a year ago, as you recall. And as you recall, back on December, I believe, 5th it was, council awarded a contract phase one, which is the design and the pricing. Everything is on or under, actually under budget because the pricing is coming out really, really well because of what we're in right now. People are anxious to get to work. Everything's complete. It's ready to go for construction. If we, if we were to start here in late July, like the original schedule asked for, that project will be finished in November of '21, about halfway through fiscal '22. Still about six months behind where we will need it based on our forecasted traffic. But it's not as bad as being almost three years behind when we needed that parking. So zero impact to our finances, all of our financial plan incorporates the, the debt service for that, as well as a CARES Act dollars. Again, it was put in place a year ago. On the terminal side, we are well underway on design. TSA is engaged through a grant program. CBP Customs and Port Protection is fully engaged. The flexibility we have on the terminal side is that we have not yet secured financing and we don't anticipate doing that at the earliest next year sometime. The advantage of being in that position is that if we need to wait a year, we can wait a year because there's no obligation to move forward. Back to the garage side, $22.5 million of economic development. 150 to 200 people will go to work. And the vast majority, I want to say 75 to 80%, will be all local, just as we were intending to be with the PLA. PRA, I'm sorry. So everything remains on schedule, on time. And the one caveat again is on the terminal side where we have flexibility to say, you know, let's hold off one year, let's hold off six months. And so we'll be monitoring that, that situation very closely.
Perfect. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Appreciate your time, Kevin.
It looks like we have councilmember Chavez next.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that brief outline, Kevin. Just a couple of questions. So with regards to the CARES dollars, you said it's a reimbursement opportunity, total amount $13 million. And I saw that, I heard the breakdown that you mentioned with regards to what we're planning on doing that. Is there, is there opportunity to utilize some of those funds for the expansion that we're going through regarding, obviously, complying with the social distance guidelines and some reconfiguration work? Or, or is that something that's not been contemplated by your folks?
So, so there's actually two, two sources of CARES Act dollars available to the airports. One is the airport CARES Act dollars I just talked about. And the three primary policy goals that Congress established is that they want to keep airports reliable, safe, be able to serve the aviation industry. They want to maintain and keep airport credit ratings. And they want to keep airport workers employed. Those are the three policy goals that Congress established. And that's exactly what we're doing to CARES Act dollars. Now, the other CARES Act dollars on the municipal side, where social distancing, you know, labeling and signage and all kinds of things, we've been able to do a lot of that in-house work, production, making sneeze guards, all these things. Our, our expenses have been relatively minor. We've been following the siege protocols and, and submitting those specific invoices to the COVID-19 issue like the other city departments have. I think to date, we have spent $20,000 total. So to, so in essence, it's two separate pots here. One's the specific to the airport operations side and the other is specific to this, this ongoing, managing the ongoing COVID-19 issue.
That makes sense. And so with regards to, I know that there's a solar project that will be happening there at the airport. As well, is that going to be covered under the PLA or is that a separate conversation?
That would be under the PLA as well. The, the, the solar project, we are, we went to council a while back. I can't remember which month it was, but we're seeking a cog grant for a technology to look at a, a smart parking system, but solar projects and charging stations. If we're successful in getting that grant, then we are able to move the solar piece along, but it's within, be part of the entire project.
What's the anticipated timeline for that one, Kevin?
For the solar or for the garage? So it would be part of the garage project. It's on the roof of the garage. And so it just, it'll be just part of the construction. It's about a 16-month construction window for the garage. If we get going, for example, in late July, then they'll be done in November. So when that opens, the goal is to have the solar, and the goal is to make it a carbon neutral project, meaning that solar 100% offsets the entire energy usage of the garage.
Would it, would it be an opportunity also to look at other sources of funding to expand the solar footprint there in the airport, not just the garage, but other locations?
So right now, we've got a 20-acre solar farm. That solar farm generates 74% of the airport's entire energy consumption. So we can, we have not yet, we can certainly look at expanding that. It becomes the point where, you know, how much more, the cost to add more versus getting that last 10%, getting that last 20%, we certainly can evaluate that. But so, and we have the land available to do that.
Okay. And then last question I had with regards to the, the staff there at the airport. What has been the, the number of employees at the airport that have been doing telework there during this pandemic?
So I like to break it down into two parts. We've got the administrative part of the airport function and we've got the, the field operations staff. Overall, it's 50%. About 75% of the office staff is teleworking. And, you know, 20, 25%, no less than that, actually, the field staff, very few field staff can telework. They've got to be their electricians and the maintenance folks. But at least on the office side, it's 75% or overall average of 50%.
And then as, as we're looking at kind of dealing with this new reality of, of, you know, COVID and the telework, I know that other cities have kind of came about the realization that it might be cost efficient to do some more telework. kind of came about the realization that it might be cost efficient to do some more telework um, models. Um, are, are we looking at that as far as the airport?
No, and we're looking at that citywide, council member. And as we move forward after budget, we can come back and update you on how we're hoping to address that citywide.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are all my questions, President.
Thank you. We have council members, President.
Yes, uh, thank you, Kevin. I think you've answered pretty much uh, almost all of my questions, just sort of throughout these discussions here. Um, did want to uh, inquire though, looking at your projected spending plan for uh, the coming fiscal year, uh, specific to like the CARES Acts dollars, the, the ones specific to airports. Um, I mean, I, I assume, and this is the same concern that I brought up with Tim Warman, uh, in talking about our, our cities' uh, dollars. Um, you know, does that account for the current circumstances, or would that be potentially spent differently if uh, circumstances change?
So.
Is that what you're referring to, council uh, member, like another round of COVID in the fall or, or something around, along those lines?
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, right now, we have, we have a pretty rosy projection, right, of, of sort of continued uh, continued uh, increase uh, in, in clients, right, right, getting on a plane, but um, if they go backwards for whatever reason, uh, would be, just out of curiosity, right, if we see circumstances change, would that uh, result in a different spending plan for the, for the airport CARES Act dollars?
So let me just play out a doomsday scenario for the airport. Let's assume for a moment that um, nobody's flying anymore for the next ten months, right? I mean, like, we're not, we're not gonna, we're now close to thirty percent, we're gonna keep growing, but let's say that doesn't happen, let's say it just stalls, and it's like, only twenty percent of normal for the entire fiscal year. The CO- the CO- the CARES Act dollars that the airport got can cover all airport expenses in that scenario. Meaning even at uh, extremely low activity levels, the COVID, the CARES Act dollars for airports will get us through the entire fiscal year, with, without any, any issue at all.
So, so, so the, the minimum threshold we have to continue to see is an average of twenty percent throughout the fiscal year?
And let me tell you why. So, so um, our bearable and minimum revenue stream that we need to have is twenty-one million, okay? And um, if you use all thirteen million, that's a difference of now eight million dollars. Well, we receive eight million dollars just in fixed rents, with zero airline activity, just fixed rents. So that's why we're very confident that we're gonna be able to navigate through this coming fiscal year without any issue at all. And that's what I was referring to earlier when I said that we have a cushion.
Okay, great, Kevin. Yeah, again, yeah, appreciate that. That sounds, you know, good to me. Uh, you answered all my other questions again throughout the discussion about, you know, how you were pulling dollars and billing against our general uh, CARES Act funds uh, versus the airport, and uh, about the capital uh, projects that we've been voting on here the last year and a half. Um, uh, council president, I, I did want to uh, just take a second to um, you know, as we're navigating the uh, landscape here with all of these disruptive uh, racist comments and the public comment. Um, you know, for folks like myself who have, you know, experienced racism our, our whole life, it's we, you know, we, it's tough to hear, but we kind of, we shrug it off and we, we move on and can carry on with life, but um, you know, maybe we can figure out a way to, I don't know, better screen these folks. Uh, in the council chamber, we would usually have folks announce their name uh, and their address before they, they speak to us. Uh, now, because of council member Soria's line of questioning, we know that we're checking IP addresses, so um, you know, obviously, that's uh, kind of left somewhat to your discretion, but I give you my input, is I'd like to continue to see people uh, allowed to, to weigh in on whether it's airports, or police, or fire. Um, uh, with, you know, our IT folks ready to kick anybody off who is disruptive.
Thank you. All right, council member Brettafield, I believe.
Kevin, uh, I, I think you do a great job at the airport. I think we all probably feel that way. Uh, have you seen an increase um, in people flying over the last month, or where, where are things at with that?
I would say uh, the Labor Day, excuse me, the Memorial Day weekend, we just saw an immediate uh, shift. Partly because of news of things starting to open up. Um, you know, we hit June eleventh, we hit twenty-nine percent, down from seven percent in April. So, and, and uh, the airlines are all ramping up. So I would say from Memorial Day weekend, it's been a steady increase. And people are, I mean, it's, people are not afraid to get out there. We got good social distancing in the airport, people are wearing masks, people are flying. Um, you know, uh, the, the uh, the Mexico flights are full. Um, initially, Valeris came back with two a week, and it's, and immediately before they even started, they went to four a week. I got a call from Arrow Mexico last week, they're back to a hundred percent starting July one. Um, Delta has been great, they're moving back to their three a day from two a day. Uh, of course, you heard the news about Alaska. So all the airlines are uh, full steam ahead in reaction to the bookings that they're seeing, both coming into our area as well as going out. So uh, everything is heading in the right direction, doesn't mean that there could be some dip because something happens later, but um, we are, we're ready for them. Um, and it's good to see uh, people moving around and not afraid to get out and, and uh, you know, live their lives.
Okay. Are they all, are the, all the airlines uh, requiring masks on the, on their flights?
They're requiring masks, yes, and they do special cleaning every single time the plane is empty. Um, and they're really, I mean, I will tell you this, so airports, not just us, but all airports are working very closely with all the airlines to really put out positive messaging to build up confidence that it's okay to fly. We've got measures in place, both at the airport as well as on the aircraft. And so the airlines have just fantastic to work with. If somebody comes into the terminal, they don't have a mask with them, the airlines uh, will give them a mask. If they don't have one available, we as an airport will give them a mask. So nobody will, uh, there won't be any need for masks. Uh, strongly encouraged to wear them, social distancing, so um, everything really is heading in the right direction.
Okay. Um, thank you, Kevin, and I, I want to echo uh, with, what Esmeralda said in terms of finding uh, the IP addresses for uh, these folks. I mean, these, these folks are cowards, basically. I mean, they have uh, Zoom, they can be anonymous. Um, and I, a- a- again, I want to encourage uh, the, the council and uh, city manager, let's open up uh, this building, let's get back in the chamber because these cowards will not come forward before the council and speak. They do it anonymously behind Zoom. Um, so I, I hope, one, that we can track them. Um, I hope we can uh, uh, identify who they are, because they're basically on keyboards anonymously uh, spewing this uh, racist bile. So um, hopefully, we can do that, and I look forward to getting back to the council uh, chamber. Uh, so the people can come, people who really want to talk about what's happening uh, in our community and what we're doing as a council, uh, can address us rather than Zoom. Zoom is fine, but it's clearly uh, not uh, meeting in person with your elected leaders and addressing the concerns. But these, these are cowards, basically, who hide behind Zoom. And uh, like uh, Esmeralda said, I hope we can uh, track them and identify them. Thank you.
And I, council uh, member Brettafield, I wanted to let you know our target date to open council chambers is the twenty-fifth of June.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, and I appreciate that council member Brettafield, but he, I mean, even after we open the chambers, I mean, I think that will continue to be a problem, because we'll have a, a segment of the limited folks who can be in the chambers with us. Um, and we'll have to continue to allow for this. So I mean, it's, it's something that I think we long-term have to address, but I appreciate your comments.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, council, let's get back on the budget of the airport. We have council uh, vice president Caprileo. Um, would you like to speak? Yes, your hand up.
Uh, I just wanted to add to Kevin's comments there, uh, and to answer a little bit of uh, member Soria's questions on the PLA that, the subcommittee that I chaired. We addressed uh, apprenticeships and interns and local hires in particular. They've been across the board pretty well, uh, supporting our local economy, our local community, our local workforce. And uh, Kevin's made sure that we follow through with that, and we're, we're on a great path uh, to completion of the airport. And again, local, local, local. So uh, hats off to you again, Kevin, fantastic job. Uh, keep up the good work. Let me know if you need anything uh, from the council. Thank you.
All right, that's all the comments from council. Um, I will go with my questions. Um, Kevin, um, what modifications have you made to the airport under the COVID pandemic? I haven't been to the airport since the COVID began. What exact modifications have you made, and have you paid for those modifications through the COVID funds?
So, to answer the latter question, yes, uh, we, we have been or in the process of being reimbursed through the COVID funds for the modifications, but so we have uh, social distancing uh, signage and stickers uh, throughout in the queuing areas and ticket lobby. We have them up at the gate areas. Uh, you know, the long uh, walkway to get back to the gates. We put uh, spaced stanchions up to, to direct people going in one direction on one side, another direction going the other way. Same thing as you go over into baggage claim, uh, we've done that. Um, uh, strongly recommend, of course, masks, we've talked about that. A, a lot of signage um, in the um, the federal inspection station for the international arrivals from Guadalajara and that region of Mexico. Uh, same thing, we've got uh, social distancing inside the facility, we've got uh, special tape on the ground, signage all the way through from the time you go in the doors until you um, get into where the baggage claim area is and the processing. Um, over a hundred sneeze guards or uh, throughout the facility, we've got over a hundred counters that we, we dealt with. So we actually bought the bulk material and fabricated them ourselves. Um, and then uh, back on the international side, one of the things that we're doing, because what we want to do is get people off the plane quickly, but they've been sitting on a plane, it's a small tube flying through the sky for, you know, three, four hours. And so to keep the social distancing intact, once they come off the plane, um, we've set up queuing actually outside the federal inspection station. And, and fortunately, there are, there are night flights, and people wait outside anyway, but not as long as they do now. And so uh, as winter approaches, we're looking at putting up uh, some tents, some uh, that you've seen like in parking lot sales, uh, so that we can keep them uh, out of the weather um, and to be prepared for the winter time, because who knows how long this is gonna be with us? So those are a number of the measures, and of course, we're working with the airlines with their messaging as well, too, and all of our uh, LCD screens in, in the terminal. So um, and we're finding really, really good cooperation, people are distancing. Um, we're experimenting with the main doors in and out only, it's a little tough because you still get some cross traffic, so we're kind of playing with that. It looks like it's working well in the baggage claim area, but in the main ticket lobby, it's almost maybe creating uh, too much crowds by having a dedicated in and outs, we're just kind of playing with that still. But we're really looking at this from a holistic standpoint. Um, and so hopefully, that answers your question, but um, the, the point is, it's, it's always evolving.
Uh, Kevin, um, given as international airport, is all the signage and directions in multiple languages?
Yes, Spanish and actually, both in the international facility as well as throughout the regular terminal facility, it's all Spanish and English.
And just those two languages?
Yes. You know, one of the things is, we use a lot of visuals on our, on us, on our distancing signage, and visuals really is what people pick up on and what people, people see and use, and we do visuals in a way that it's very, very intuitive. There's still language on the sign, and it is those two languages. Uh, you can't really fit much more on these signs, but really, we focus on these visuals.
And then my last question is, um, you broke down the CARES Act money that you plan to spend. Where, where can I find that information? Because I, I have not seen it in writing anywhere.
Bear with us for one minute, because somebody's playing with the computer buttons that knows way more than I do. Oh, you had that up?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Yeah, what this is, this is just a one-pager identifying the two different, in an air, the airport world, two different CARES Act funds for airport. The top section you see there is um,
My question, Kevin, is where can I find the information and where can the public find it?
It was sent to them.
It was emailed.
On Friday.
On Friday.
To the, to the city clerk's office.
To the city clerk's office. So it's on record with the city clerk's office, it went on on Friday.
All right, good deal. Can you make sure that that's posted on your website and on the budget website? We're trying to make this information, I know it's given to us last minute, but we want to make sure the public clearly understands, and city manager, the the um, line item, the tell information that you referenced on the finance website, I went on it just now, and it just has a police department um, breakdown, no other department breakdown. So we're gonna, we can-
I believe you all asked last week to pull out the police department line item, which we've done, and I, we'll make sure that the other one is on there, too, if it's not. Oh, Henry is telling me that it is on there, so we'll send you all the link.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, those are all my questions, Kevin. Thank you for your um, time and your presentation.
All right, thank you.
All right, city manager, before we go on to the next department, which is FACS, um, we're gonna, we've been asked to allow the police department to test their Zoom um, video conferencing really quick, um, to make sure that we have enough time to fix any technicalities on their end, or, or so can. Uh, Gavin, can we get the police department?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do.
Just give us a two-minute break, council. All right, Chief Paul, can you, you hear us? I think you have to unmute yourself.
Mark, Mark, can you unmute? PD, we can't, hi, can, we can't hear the chief.
They, they have to mute themselves, city manager.
Okay. Well, Mark, Mark is with them, Mark Stevens is with them. Can't hear you.
It's, they need to unmute their phone.
All right, our police department, you are live on TV, being, your IT skills are being tested at the moment, so um, I'm hoping you guys get a passing grade here. All right, chief, I think you are on audio, can you test it?
They can't hear you.
Let's do that then.
All right, chief. All right, chief, um, it looks like we got your, some of your audio and feedback. Uh, what we're gonna do is move on with the FACS transportation budget, and then after that, we'll take a fifteen-minute break before we hear the fire budget, and make sure you guys are all squared away from your end. That sound good? All right, guys, thank you. All right, Mr. Barfield, you have the floor with the FACS transportation budget. And council, we are officially back online with the budget presentation of our FACS department.
For the five hundred-plus employees of the transportation department, which includes FACS, municipal fleet, and public safety fleet. Uh, we will begin with uh-
Mr. Barfield, can I interrupt you for a second? Can you just start over? You've um, got on audio a little late, so.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. Um, again, on behalf of the five hundred uh, members of our staff, both transportation, municipal fleet, and public safety fleet, honored to be here today. We will start with uh, the FACS budget. Um, as you know, FACS operates seventeen fixed routes and a paratransit co- complimentary paratransit service. Uh, we uh, maintain the services of both buses, uh, both in-revenue and non-revenue vehicles. And of course, the uh, administration of all of our grants uh, and programming and services, as you see on the screen. When I want, want to advance, I go to plus. Oh, okay, thank you. Um, here is our FACS budget um, as of May thirtieth. And again, this is all uh, federal funding, there's no general funds involved. Um, and at the bottom, you'll see um, our capital uh, projects for FACS. Moving on to moving on to our municipal service fleet, uh, we service the twenty-three hundred vehicles of the city's fleet. Uh, everything from backhoes uh, to uh, large-scale tractors, uh, trailers that carry um, say, like the spreaders or heavy equipment for both public utilities and public works. That department or that division also provides all the maintenance, buys all the parts. And in addition, will purchase the vehicles on behalf of that city's department. As you can see below is the actual is the actual budget for that particular group. Again, they derive their funds as an internal service fund, so we build a department for whose work we are doing. And then finally, we will come to the. CARES, yes. The special budget. All right. And then most importantly, you probably want to know about our CARES funding. Our CARES funding is 32.4 million, just like Kevin in FAA. This will all be reimbursable. We have yet to do a drawdown. Our goal is, and it's retro to January 20 of this particular year. It is our goal to, in July, once the June books close, is to do a drawdown and allow us at 100% to recover all of our costs from July, January 20 to June 30 for anything COVID-related. That includes operating and all of the work that we've done to keep our buses clean every night, the extra staff we've brought on and the sanitizing we do throughout the day. That's further broken down. And then that's our anticipated revenue, shows our passenger fares, which at the time of the slide, we were seeing a 57% reduction in passengers, 6% reduction in measure C, and 6% reduction or more in state TDA funds. State budget, as you know, is scheduled to be voted on tonight. And we expect that between TDA, SDA, and some of our other funds that we receive from the state, up to possibly a 15% cut overall. Again, CARES is retro back to January 10. There's no timeframe, January 20. There's no timeframe for us on that. And again, it is our desire to go 100% once we do our drawdown and the books close in June. With that, I will pause and prepare for any questions.
Thank you. We're gonna start off with our council vice president. Paul, do you have any questions for our fax department?
No, I'll save it for September.
Thank you, Paul. All right, now, council members, is there any questions for, we see council member Sparza, you have the floor.
Hey, good morning, Greg.
Good morning.
So, you know, you know, if you and I are in the same room or virtual room, you know, I got a rap about the Manchester Transit Center.
Absolutely.
And if there's any any impacts or anything has changed?
No, there's been a lot of changes. So we finished, there are four minor bid projects. Two of them are wrapping up. This week, we're trying to figure out what epoxy will go on to the stone walls for the bench seating. And then we'll be able to also do the planter boxes. The goal was to pull all the dirt out, let the the company get in there, make it waterproof, and then put the dirt back and then replant everything. So we're getting much closer to being back home at Manchester Center.
Great, great. And then has the, what is, you remind me what the projected completion timeline is? And if there have been any delays because of the current circumstances?
The only delay to COVID is one of our contractors is was also the contractor that was responsible for cleaning the cruise ship in the Bay Area. But we were able to do other work around that. So and we're looking at 60 days.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Councilman Travis, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Great, quick question. So we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with regards to approaching the county about helping with some of the costs. Did we do some outreach and what was the response if we did?
So we actually, my team, as I had said, has gone out, done their preliminary work, found a cost. And now we are presenting that to the county. So look forward to a trade memo very shortly.
And then I know we're looking at reconfiguring or analyzing our bus routes. Where are we at with conversations with regards to the school district with their new campuses that they're building? State Center Community College with Southwest Southeast Campus, and then obviously having bus service out to the distribution centers. What's the status of looking at that?
So let's start with State Center because we just spoke to them over on Friday. We're in conversations with State Center because for the fall semester, they will not have any on-campus classes except for labs. And so we're talking to them right now about what that amount looks like, what that number looks like. And then how, if if needed, how we could assist in servicing them. The difficulty and downside to that is each bus is only limited to 10 passengers at a time right now for social spacing reasons. And so we're having a difficult time, particularly along Route 1, continuing to move people accordingly. As far as Fresno Unified, we are in their 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 new site. We are more waiting for them to figure out if they're even coming back in the fall. Before we dive into that dialogue, we've kind of been pushed to the back. And then State Center, we already operate Route 38, Route 34, and Route 32 and Route 28 that all serve that general neighborhood. And so we're good for the new State Center campus.
Honing in on the Southeast Campus, as you know, it's over on Jensen and Willow area. Have there been any conversations with State Center with regards to what that would look like?
No, not yet. Our goal was really to figure out, pre-COVID, was to figure out where we were in the series of route changes that we were we were facing and then move on to the next conversation, which would have been that. And then immediately after that, we have experienced COVID. So right now, we've just been trying to hang on.
And then one of the things I want to put on your radar with regards to bus service and the need. And, you know, you're familiar with this over in the Southeast part where we had a lot of the new developments come up, we're growing and we're gonna keep growing. I would encourage you to reach out to also Sangre Unified. They're building that huge mega campus on Jensen and Fowler Armstrong area. And just kind of using that also as the lynchman for that neighborhood. There are a lot of folks that live out there that don't have access to bus service. And I understand that the need needs to be there. But I think a conversation with Sangre and then was there a future growth plans look like would be helpful for facts. And, you know, we'd love to, in my office, facilitate some of those conversations for some of the residents that live out there. I've kept a little quick tally sheet on what that looks like. So we'll we'll send you that information over to Greg.
Oh, appreciate that very much. And again, the planning staff, that was their next directive. But then we have gone into COVID. And so that has all kind of been put on hold.
Yeah, just want to keep it on your radar.
It's there, council member. I got you.
Thank you. All right, those are my questions for the.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Council President. So a couple of questions, Greg. Thank you for the information. Appreciate that. On some of the vacancies, I think, that are noted in in the municipal fleet and then also in the fax, what what kind of positions are the ones that are being vacant? And are they being vacant for long periods of time or because it's together, it's 89 positions?
So in fact, which has a separate funding source, the federal side, is primarily bus drivers and bus mechanics. And so right before the hiring freeze, we were working to underfill the bus mechanic ones with what we call Equipment Service Worker 2s, pretty much as a training program. We found great success with hiring those individuals, getting their their beginning ASC certifications, and then moving them up to bus mechanics. And of course, bus drivers is always a continuous hiring that we will do. So we are working with the Personnel Department, asking for a waiver because we continue to need those those two positions. When it comes to the public safety and the municipal fleet, those are mostly on hold because those are ISF positions. So it really depends on what happens with the general fund and our customers in the general fund as to whether we should fill those positions or not. If we're not repairing as many vehicles, we may not need as much staff in this first quarter or two. So we're holding on to those until we figure out where people land.
What are ISF positions?
They're internal service funded positions. So that means that our customers say your your office may have a vehicle. And when you bring that vehicle in for tune-up, we charge you out of your general fund budget for the reimbursement of those costs of fixing your vehicle.
So the positions that are vacant there are mostly ma- maintenance people or?
Yes, Equipment Service Workers, laborers, and there are a couple of mechanics.
And so 59 seems a pretty, like a pretty high number. Is that pretty consistent? Or is it just attrition? What is what is the vacancy rate have to do with?
It is, it is pretty consistent. There's also a little competition between our three fleets. So with fax, they love to rob from municipal, municipal likes to take from fax, and public safety likes to take from both of them. The the pay and the work is is rewarding in all three of the divisions. But sometimes you find a good worker right next to you in the next shop, so.
What are we doing so that we're expanding beyond just dealing each other's employees?
So beyond the competition, we actually have, with Fresno Unified, we have a cooperative agreement with them to do to do some training where we bring folks in. Most of that training happens in the springtime, so none of it happened this year. And then, of course, our relationship with Fresno City College keeps us active and trying to reach out to them. But look, a bus mechanic or a heavy-duty mechanic is in or mechanic in general i- is in great demand. So we're competing with the Future Fords and the Toyota dealerships and the BMW dealerships for this, too. So we will continue to be aggressive in our recruitment.
Are our salary packages competitive?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. I'm just trying to think, you know, as we move forward and given that the a lot of the funds here are not impacted by general fund, how do we maximize the opportunity to hire folks that are going to be impacted by the recession? And especially when we're talking about, I'm going to be interested in seeing the makeup of our workforce. Because as we've heard from the African-American community and even other ethnic minorities in terms of the disinvestments and what we've done, how can we improve and create a better pipeline to make sure that folks have an opportunity for these jobs? And these are, you know, I think, pretty decently paid jobs with a pension and healthcare. And so our communities, you know, should have the opportunity to to compete for these jobs. And so I'm interested in seeing kind of, and maybe sitting offline, director to figure out what is it that we can do to create a better pipeline so that we're expanding rather than just competing amongst our departments in shuffling people around. I'd like to figure out how we increase that opportunity for, especially for those that live in, you know, 93706, I know that I don't represent, but a lot of folks, there's a huge unemployment rate in that SIP code. So how are we targeting is is the training and the outreach really trickling down to the community to really get those folks ready and prepared to be able to get those jobs?
Well, I will say one thing, we have secured a one and a half million dollar grant that we are the fiscal agent for, for the State Center Community College District and Proterra, which is the electric bus manufacturer. Proterra will actually be training there. So as we move, and that's on the on the agenda for Thursday, as we move from near-zero admissions to zero admissions in the next 20 years, we need to retrain the workforce to be able to work on electric buses and hydrogen buses or hydrogen cars and electric cars. So we are actually creating a training center using Proterra as the trainers with State Center at the Southwest Fresno Campus.
Perfect. That's awesome. That's great to to hear.
I I would like to just chime in on the exchange of staff among the divisions. There are really two things that happen there. One is a person may come in as an entry-level employee and there is a promotion in another division. And so they have the opportunity to move, which I think is a good thing, but that creates a new entry-level position vacancy. The second thing is really just a dynamic related to shifts. And so fax runs three shifts, including a graveyard shift. Municipal fleet runs two. And public safety, I believe, is running two with a small skeleton crew on swing. So what happens oftentimes is people get into a position to get into the city, which graveyard is often the least desirable. They hire in there and then they they tend to, when a position opens up on a better shift move. So that's what the exchange is is really about. Getting qualified people in the front end is the challenging part. But as Greg mentioned, as we bring people in at entry level and and train them within, then then we see that movement upward and over into different divisions. So I think Greg's on the right track in that we're we're really trying to work with the community colleges to get more people in on the front end.
That's great. Thank you for that explanation. Have we thought about, given that the the less desirable shift is the graveyard shift, what we do to incentivize folks? Maybe give some.
They do have a shift differential, but we might review and see whether that that is enough.
Yeah, well, it seems to be an issue, so I would I would recommend that it does get reviewed. And that if we want to make it more competitive, so people want to do the graveyard shift, that we do that so that we are, you know, attracting folks to do that work. So I would I would advise to do that. Couple other questions that I have. On the public safety fleet, what's the role? Can you guys talk about that?
Yeah, so public, the public safety fleet is responsible for both our police vehicles, both marked and unmarked, and all of our fire apparatuses and their vehicles. Their role is to purchase, to service, and to, at the end of their life, take them apart and sell them at auction, which turns out to be about a thousand bucks apiece, maybe a little bit more. But that is what public safety fleet does.
Okay, perfect. Have some questions on the Handy Ride. So we have a number of our constituents that have been reporting on the Handy Ride capacity. And we are being told, I don't know if this is true, that they're no longer accepting standing appointments. Maybe you can clarify that. And also, I think that we've asked, and maybe you guys have said that there are limits on those that are enforced by the FTA. So just trying to figure out, especially right now with COVID, and how people may feel less inclined to use the, you know, a bus if they can't get a ride through Handy Ride. Have we had any conversations of expanding and using some of those Federal Care Act dollars to be able to expand accessibility to folks that could use Handy Ride during this time?
Well, so, for example, Handy Ride, just like we are operating at full capacity, with the exception of they have, because of furloughs with the federal government, they have cut out their late-night service because those riders were working at the IRS. But they are seeing a 70% drop in ridership. They are limited to three riders. They are limited to three riders per bus. Of course, you know, all of our our riders must wear masks along with the driver, but there is capacity there. So if people wanted to ride on Handy Ride, all they've got to do is make their reservations the day before and they probably will have the vehicle to themselves.
Okay, okay, we'll we'll make sure that we're letting our folks that are calling us in. Okay, and then I wanted to get an update on the our program that we had with Fresno City College, remember the bus, the pass? I know the last conversations, people were kind of, it was, there were some communication stuff, some, you know, think if you can give us an update on where we're at moving forward.
So our our first conversation and our only since the council item was Friday. We we did have a conversation where we believe that based on the information we asked State Center, if it's reasonable, we will figure out a way to help carry those passengers to both City College and to Clovis Community. Again, the difficulty is we are limited to ten riders per bus. And with our numbers going up, I am reluctant as some of our other counterparts have begun to start doing, to go to fifteen passengers per bus. Until our numbers in this county start to come down, we will stay at ten passengers on fixed and three on Handy Ride.
What about, but I'm talking about the our bus, the bus pass program where they were buying passes from us or whatnot at a discount rate, but we had a cap that essentially charged them without, it was no discount at the cap fee at the cap that we had. So I'm just trying to figure out, because I think we had given direction to go and negotiate something that where we would be supporting and encouraging the the students to get these passes and the university to be able to afford it so that we are getting more students on the buses and off their their cars or also just encouraging folks to ride the bus to go to school because we know that some folks don't have transportation. So if they don't have have transportation even through the bus because can't afford it, they will opt to not go to school. So where are we at with that?
So because both State Center, Fresno State and Clovis Community have all going to do online classes. The only population that we're talking about right now are those students primarily in allied health who have to physically come to the campus. And so our conversation on Friday was, how many sections, how many people is your population? Fresno State has suspended their program indefinitely, and we understand why. And so with State Center, it's on them now to get us back that information. And then we'll figure out how we can come up with a a a solution in order to provide access to those people who need to physically come to the campus, a a way to get there.
Okay, beyond this next semester, because I know that, you know, in our bureaucracy, sometimes it takes months and months to find an agreement. And so while I recognize that this next fall semester, we're going to be predominantly online, it is my desire that we really start getting serious about having a conversation come, you know, before way before January, so the students know, are they going to be able to get a bus pass that once they're right, once the you know, the college says, hey, we're we're going coming back in person teaching, that we're ready and that we're not scrambling last minute. At least that's my desire from the the city, from, you know, our perspective. I will also talk to, you know, some of the trustees and president, but I'd like you guys to kind of start that process now because I know that it may take a few months.
Yeah, so our commitment at the end of the call was that we were going to look at the current contract, begin to resharpen our pencil. My only concern is the money that we would normally use to help with a program like this would be state and local. And we're losing a lot of that state state and local funds. So I may not have the flexibility, but we are beginning that dialogue. And we committed to sometime in September to begin that conversation in earnest.
What are those state and local funds and how can we work with our state reps to see how we can?
So that that state money would be, which is which I explained is part of the budget in that one slide, what we expect to be a possibly fifteen percent reduction in our state funds. It's SDA, it's TDA, STD, state of good repair, and what we call LCTOP, low carbon, low carbon program. Are are going to be severely impacted. And we have negotiated to to the the ends of the earth through the California Transit Association, pleading with the governor and the legislature to not touch that that money. But they will be making that cut today. And then locally, it's Measure C. And that's really going to be about how much gas we sold. You don't sell a lot of gas, we're not going to see a lot of revenue out of Measure C. And as I indicated earlier in in my presentation, it's six percent already that we're seeing less. And that's only going to get worse as the year goes on.
Yeah, and on the Measure C issue, we know that Measure C is right now a a topic of conversation in terms of going out to the taxpayers again. I think that we need to make sure that not only that we advocate that we get what we've been getting, but actually increase if we're going to get serious about increase the access of pu- public transit to our community and to make sure that if it's a priority for us to educate folks within the city of Fresno, that we find the mechanism to be able to provide affordable, an affordable way to get there, that is through, you know, these bus ba- bus pass programs that we've done in the past. So I think that we have to be able to leverage the fact that, you know, we our our population pays, you know, at least fifty percent of those dollars that go into Measure C. So therefore, we should be getting a significant share to address the needs that we have.
Well, you'll be happy to know that both Scott Moser and I are on that working committee. And we are supposed to begin meetings in late July, early August with the FCTR A. So we will be at the table and we will make sure that we advocate very strongly for our city.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Two more questions, one on the wifi. What's the status on the wifi of the buses? I know that this has been an issue for some time. The young people have been pushing for it for a while. Can you give us the status for the public?
I thought that was going to be your first question.
Second to last question.
No, wifi, so what we did was we began to study what wifi would look like if we did it internally. And then ISD approached us and said, let's test them. And so over the fall, they did test that. They found that there were some security issues. And so now we've gone out to a third party vendor. We've got an RFP on the street and we're looking for a third party vendor to for them to bring the equipment on versus us using ours and being that security risk.
Okay, and have we had any conversations with Bitwise? It was, I know that there is a couple of us that met with them and there was a a strong interest in them entering into a partnership with the city. I think, given the fact of the investments that they've done and what they've grown, in my perspective, this seemed like a a a great potential partnership. I know that they wanted to be able to maybe work on on the wifi. And I think one of the trade trade offs or one of the things that they had said, they would help offset the cost for these bus passes for the college kids. So just wondering where, if those conversations happened, did we have to go to RFP versus working directly with some of the folks that are, you know how sometimes we just enter into agreement because they have the ex- that knowledge and expertise, I forget what it's called, but those specific?
So so in this case, Bitwise never came to us. They went to you all and to the trustees. But Bitwise had come to us two years earlier about an app. That's what they wanted to create. That's the trade off for State Center. Well, we actually created my like fax bus app here locally within the city structure. And literally, two weeks before COVID, or we were in the testing phase to do to release it in March. So it's that's on hold because ISD is being extremely busy trying to get all the Zoom technology and get you all looking nice every day. But we already have that technology from a programmer who actually came from Bitwise and now and now works full time for the city. And we did that at far less cost than Bitwise had asked for.
And so when when will we start testing it?
As soon, ISD has promised that they are almost back to being able to focus on ISD projects, meaning the rest of us. Now that they've got everyone working remotely and Zoom and everything else. So I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks, we can do our finish our internal testing. It's just with our staff that has to test it.
And is is they gonna test the, is it gonna show the bus like like live or wherever wherever the bus is or whatnot, so people know?
Back in February of twenty eighteen, when we launched BRT, we also launched my fax bus app. So it already shows you that this one, the version two, two and a half years later now, will be more user friendly and have more of that, how many steps it takes to get to here to there, first and last mile options. Those kinds of things are more included in this, and it's a much faster app.
Have we talked, have we thought about using some of the folks that actually use the bus, like maybe some of the young people or our seniors to try to have have them tested out too during this period of time?
They actually are part of our smart card testing. So as we begin to roll out smart cards, we plan to give students and seniors and regular riders the ability to test out our smart cards. Most of the feedback in the update of my fax bus app, which has over twelve thousand downloads, happens to come from our users, and so that's why we made these upgrades.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then the last thing, the census is a big issue that is still looming before us. There's been a a extension to it, and I know that you may be asking, why are you asking me about this? In terms of ad space, are we doing any census ads on our buses? So that we're promoting, making sure people are feeling filling it out?
No, we were originally, we were approached very early on, but never had any follow up. Probably more so due to COVID, because that fault that initial outreach was from a former city staffer and that was like the first week in March.
So is there any way that we can do, just like some ads sponsored by us that say are essentially promoting folks to fill out the census? And I bring this up because if it were not for the fact that we we la- in the ten years ago, we counted over half a million people, we wouldn't have got the ninety-two million. We wouldn't have gone the hundred whatever plus million for fax. And so I just want to make sure that folks are aware that that's still happening and that where they can go to fill it out so that we get a more accurate count. The nine three seven oh six right now is the SIP code that is lagging lagging behind. And so I know that many of them ride our buses. So I think if we're putting that information in front of their face, hopefully, it's a reminder to them and it's a reminder to the other populace that the census needs needs to be filled out. Can we do that?
Yeah, well, we can follow up with Lamar, who handles our 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 both our wraps, but also our internal. In each bus, there are channel sets on the bus. And we can see if through the PSA program they have, if this is eligible.
Perfect. Yeah, I'd love to follow up with you on that. Thank you, Director.
For the ridership itself, the internal advertisement that Greg mentioned would probably be a good way to do it because they they see it every time they get in the bus. Thank you. Council mayor, you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Great. Council Mayor Carrosi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Director, for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, sir.
So I, can you provide a brief description of the Herndon Cross Town? It's a new fixed route that's really important to my district.
Yeah, so when we came to council several weeks ago, we talked about Route twenty-eight going to the new Department of Social Services. That would be the first one we would do. We would do what we call an interline of Route twelve and the thirty-five, really making it one route. And when it gets to a certain point, it just changes head signs. And then the cross town three, the Herndon Route. Those are still planned. However, they may not occur in the fall. It may be more like January or early next year. Again, we have to figure out what our funding looks like to sustain those routes long term. And that's the one that that has additional costs.
Yeah, so can you explain to folks how far it's going to extend down Herndon?
It will go from El Paso on one side all the way to Peach on the other side, serving all of those medical facilities along Herndon and businesses, and we're very excited about that. And then the other route, the other route that we're looking at is taking Route twenty and extending it through Highway City up to the back of El Paso. So it will connect west of ninety-nine with the El Paso and also make a connection to Route three.
And that's and that's really important. You talked about the medical offices. But people may not understand, and this is something that I I I've learned over the years, is our paratransport. So transport for folks that, you know, may be disabled or that that's tied to our fixed route system for federal funding. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, the way it is is that we have to have complementary paratransit service. So that service has to be about up to three fourths of a mile away from a fixed route. So by adding Route three, we basically open up additional territories that will be serviced by paratransit.
Great, okay. So that's, again, I I do appreciate that and my residents, several of whom I met when I was canvassing neighborhoods, we really appreciative of having that option because for them, it's really hard, especially when you're in a neighborhood that they may not have access to transportation, they'll be able to get to their medical appointments faster. Thank you for that. The next thing I want to talk to you about is COVID and mass transit. Something that's not really being discussed a whole lot right now is SB seven four three, the new VNT laws that's going to start July first. And in a nutshell, basically, it's going to increase the cost price of housing and punish people for not living near a transportation hub and using mass transit. But aside from that, here's my concern. One thing that we've learned from COVID, like with the New York subway system, is how mass transit's great. It can reduce pollution in the environment, but it's a great way to spread a pandemic. So what measures are being taken using the CARES Act money to be able to deal with another pandemic or to reduce exposure to a virus on our buses in Fresno?
Let me just say that when city manager Will McQuon invited me on a Friday afternoon, the last Friday in February, to a lunch meeting on Monday with Dr. Boris and Dave Palmerville, I learned everything I could over that one weekend, working with my friends in San Francisco who had just had declared a public health emergency. By that Wednesday night, we were cleaning buses overnight. By that weekend, we had put hand sanitizing stations on every bus. By that Monday, we were had, we had public facing information on what COVID meant, what symptoms to look out for, what things that we wanted you to do. Like if you had a fever, don't ride with us today, ride with us tomorrow when you felt better, those kind of things. We also did that internally with our staff. We did a big social media push. I basically took over our social media for a month, and we pushed a lot of this out. We also did this with Handy Ride. At some point, we went to probably right after Shelter in Place, which was a Tuesday or Wednesday, I think. That weekend, I had a conversation with the city manager and requested that our drivers be allowed to wear masks. That was quickly approved. So that Monday, we began doing masks. By the following week, we were providing the PPE. And then no later than than a week after that, our passengers were wearing, and we were down to ten passengers per bus. We now have a pool of people who sanitize the bus during the day. So they're located at L Shelter A and B Shelters downtown and someone's at Manchester. So they jump on during the time point, they wipe down the bus, they jump off the back of the bus. So we have been doing all of these things to keep our folks clean and zero COVID cases. So we have been doing all of these things to keep our folks clean, and zero COVID cases of bus drivers to this point, and we want to keep it that way.
Greg Long, you're doing sneeze guards, I think?
Oh, yes, I forgot about that, sneeze guards, yeah, sneeze guards, and we, thanks to the council last week, we are supplying every additional bus that does not have one yet. We've got 20 that have security doors, we're putting, the rest of the fleet will have those security doors. So that's another thing that we've done.
Yeah, that was my next question, safety for our drivers, thank you for doing that. Thank you for being so proactive and ensuring our residents that it is safe to use our Fax Bus service during this time. My last question, more generally, is about lawsuits and exposure to the city with fleet services and the fax service. Any city is always susceptible to lawsuits, that's what happens when you're a billion-dollar, basically billion-dollar corporation. My question, though, is what measures are we taking to reduce our exposure?
So I was just reminded that we have just submitted, the council approved, our public transportation safety plan. You all did that a couple of weeks ago, that is, that is data-driven information, and it requires us to have monthly meetings with our drivers. It requires us to do certain safety-related tasks, and it requires us to report out every year what we're doing to keep things in check. And we will, that's now headed to the FDA. We've got it in early, even though FDA extended the deadline to the end of the year, we thought it was important to get it in now, and that's what we will be following from here on out. That, that public plan, you will get to see once a year, and shows all the things that we're doing. But we do more training than ever before. When our drivers have intersection issues, such as running, going hot through a yellow light, or running a red light, they go through what we call intersection management training, it's eight hours, and they have to do that before they're able to come back to work. So we make sure that we are doing those kinds of things all the time, and we continue to stress, you know, the importance of being a safe driver.
Thank you, Director, those are all my questions, I do really appreciate you always being accessible and professional. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council, those are all the questions from the council. I'm gonna go ahead and continue with my questions. Director, I know we're limiting 10 people per bus, given COVID outbreak, and we have a flush of millions of dollars from the COVID relief fund, is there any reason why we just can't add more bus routes or more buses to serve more people since we have the 32 million in COVID money?
Well, I really wish I could, but it's, it's an issue of manpower. So currently, we have 27 of our employees who are on workers' comp. We have another six or seven who are on their own personal disabilities, leave without pay. And so that, right there, creates one vacuum. Second vacuum is, we have a number of staff who are lacking child care, and so may not be working a full 40 hours a week, they may not be working at all, they may have underlying health conditions, so I think we have 40 of those who work intermittently or off altogether. So we're, right now, manpower-wise, we're just decimated. When we do have the ability to have manpower, additional manpower, we do put additional buses out. We call them sweeper services now, because they're unscheduled, and they're based on, we've passed up at three stops, eight people, and then we sweep the new bus in behind to pick up those people and continue on down the road. And part of that funding that we receive is supporting sweeper services.
So in short, the staffing shortage that would impede us from adding more routes? Okay, thank you. How's the route to the California Veterans Home going?
Yeah, that route unfortunately was suspended immediately amongst Shelter in Place, and as you know, Council President, the home unfortunately experienced some COVID-related illnesses, and we have yet to get to a point where either side of us really feel comfortable in starting that back up.
Okay, so it's on pause until further notice?
Yes.
But is it still part of your budget?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how much, how many police officers does the Fax Department fund?
So we currently fund 12, we have two sergeants and 10 officers, and they typically are two on per shift and possibly a sergeant.
So 12 officers and a sergeant, what's the cost to the Fax Department?
What's that, 2.1 million?
And 12 officers gives you two officers per shift, is that what I understood?
It's two officers per shift plus a sergeant.
So it's, but it's 12 officers?
Right, because, because our system runs from 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM, there's always an officer on duty.
And you need 12 officers to cover two people per shift?
No, it's not two people, it's our entire system. So those two officers and the sergeant at peak times will all be on, but we can have an incident at, say, Peach and, and Kings Canyon, and yet also have an incident at Blythe and Shaw, and that's two officers right there, who have now been taking some kind of action based on our request.
Understood, but what I'm trying to stand in, in this train, keep me as, I'm a simple man.
Okay.
You're paying for 12 bodies, 12 FTEs, right, at a cost of 2.1 million?
Yes.
And that provides you two officers and a sergeant on patrol or on standby in case you need them?
Yes.
Right? And how many shifts does that cover?
It covers three shifts, and then on Wednesdays, both, we have an overlap, both ships are on. So that's typically the day they do trainings, they meet with us, et cetera.
Do they support the weekend, Greg?
And they do support the weekends.
What, what kind of, how many calls for service have you had in the past year for the officers?
Ooh, if I had my radio on right now, you'd probably hear one. Calls for service are very high. We, because of the unique population that we serve here in Fresno, we tend to have those folks who may need mental health services, who are riding our bus and may have an outburst, and so thus, we have to call. We have people who sometimes have medical emergencies on our bus. We have folks who are just defiant, or as Councilmember Kabassi talked about, we do have riders who sometimes want to assault or attempt to assault one of our bus drivers, or may have a physical altercation with another passenger, both on our bus or at our bus stop facilities. So those officers handle all of those calls, and all of that is generated via our radio system and not regular patrol.
So what specialized training do the police officers get, since a lot of their calls are related to mental health and medical?
So they get all of the regular training that a police officer would get, but we also sit with them on a regular basis and talk to them about our passengers. Look, many of our Fax Officers have been with us for a long time, these are not new folks. So they have come accustomed to dealing with the kinds of calls for service that, that they get to deal with on our system.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify too, if I may, I'm just hearing from the Police Department that there are 15,000 calls for service per year for Fax.
Yeah. What's the response time that the Fax Department gets when you call for service?
But it really depends on the location of the officer. If it's a cross-town response, then sometimes they may call patrol to ask for assistance, but for the most part, it's them making a response. Again, they may start at Kings Canyon, they may end up at Shaw and Blythe, and they may have to roll Code 3, but they get there, and we're very, we're very happy and supportive of them.
Are your calls considered priority one for the Police Department, since you're paying for a set of officers?
Well, we've actually prioritized with them what our calls look like, and so like a sleeper on a bench is more of a low priority call, but an accident, a stabbing, a shooting, whatever, would be more of those priority ones.
Okay. Can I get a breakdown of the 15,000 calls for service, which ones are medical, mental health, which ones are violent assault? I'd like to know exactly what kind of calls, the $2 million and the Fax, which it's paying for.
We can gather that information and get a memo out to council.
Great, thank you, and if you can get it to us before the 25th, budget vote would be great.
That will be our goal.
Thank you, I'm City Manager, and then one last thing, the Fax Police Officers, are they treated the same way as school officers are treated? I know some of our school officers are asked to patrol the neighborhood when they're not on call. What do the Fax Police Officers do when they're, when they're not on call?
Well, just like any, any other officer, they could be driving, and they can see a situation occurring before them, and as sworn police officers, they are required to stop and intervene.
So when they're on standby for a call, where are they stationed at?
Well, typically, they're in their vehicles, moving around, checking bus stops.
It's mobile, it's not like they're, they're stationed at the Fax.
No, 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 they really don't even have a home. I think some of them dress out of Southwest, and some of them dress out of Central.
Okay, perfect, thank you, those are all my questions, is there any other questions from the council? For the Director, Councilor Kabassi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Director, I was just wondering if you could provide me, maybe just a simple answer as possible, about how your department feels about having the asset of having a dedicated Fax unit for driver safety, for public safety. You hear people say it's not safe to ride the bus, I've ridden the bus myself, it's safe every single time, the drivers are great, but do you feel that working with Fax is an asset or a liability?
It is actually an asset for us. When we went from, remember, the beginning of this year, we started with 18 officers, and we went down to 12, and 12 is what we thought could be the bare minimum. Fax has always had its own police force with nine officers, but with the size of our ridership, we were on record to break 11 million, we will get to 9 million. Last year, we served 10.5 million riders, but we want those riders and drivers to all be safe, and knowing that they can hit the panic alarm and help is on its way, because that panic alarm opens up the mic, so we can hear everything on, on the bus, that, that really is calming and soothing for both our drivers and our passengers.
Great, and you mentioned that Fax has always had some kind of public safety force, that's correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
As long as I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
Director, my last question, you mentioned you have 12 officers that you pay for now. Since you, you've reduced significantly the ridership to 10 per bus, have we reduced the amount of officers covering Fax during this time?
No, because I have the same amount of buses on the road, we have not reduced any service.
You haven't reduced routes, you've just reduced passengers.
Just passengers.
By how much?
We still start at 5:00 AM, we still run every route all day long.
Understood. What would you say is the reduction in passengers during COVID?
Well, the last week's report was 49%, so we have started at 59%. We are now inching back to, and like I said, if we didn't have the 10 rider rule, we'd probably be in the 30s, but 49% reduction from the year before last week.
So you've reduced passenger traffic by 50% essentially during COVID, are you still paying the Police Department the full amount for the officers?
Yes, because they are still providing the full amount of service through, for the entire system, and responding to as many calls probably as they were pre-COVID.
Perfect, thank you for your clarification and your time, Director.
Thank you.
You've done a good work. We have Councilmember Missouri with more questions, so she has the floor.
I have a question that just came to mind, because I know it's an issue that had come up in the past about fare evaders. Has that been an issue? Are we going after folks that aren't paying for the fare? What are, what are we doing?
So fare evasion was a big problem on bus rapid transit. So what we did was, instead of chasing folks over $1.25, we put a fare box on that bus. So now there's a fare box on the front of that bus, and so everyone has to pay. So it's no longer the free bus anymore, and people have gotten that message. There are occasions where a fare evader on any route may board the bus, and we continue to keep that bus in service and attempt to get a supervisor to respond to that. Sometimes it's, it could be misunderstanding, for example, yesterday, in my recap, I noticed that we had a rider who, for whatever reason, the bill packed, would not take her money, and so she waited for the driver to get back on, and then alert the driver who thought she was a fare evader, no, 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 your machine would not take my dollar bill. And so that was resolved right there on the spot. A lot of times, it's, it's really an issue of education, and most of our fare evasion is really about what we call back riding, like I've ridden from one end of the system to the other, and now you're, I'm supposed to pay another $1.25, and then believing that they shouldn't have to pay.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that you actually solved an issue, because you've, you know, I know that folks had talked about this some time ago, I was against us going, you know, after someone that was evading for $1.25, I just, you know, it's like a constant reminder of like criminalizing poverty, and so I'm glad that you guys were able to fix that problem. I still, you know, to some degree, have concerns about maybe other issues that may feel and may, may make people feel of communities of color that do predominantly ride the bus, that they have to constantly be watched, so I think, you know, I just wanted to share that, because I, I do have some of those concerns, and I look forward to, as we have conversations about policing in Fresno, and what are some of the things that we can do better to improve the trust, because that's, I think, what the biggest factor is within our community, trust with law enforcement, that we're looking at opportunities to improve how we provide public safety services for our community. I understand that it's important for the driver and for other folks that are, that are riding the bus, but you know, just wanted to put, put that out there, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Director, again, and as this brother indicated, thank you for solving a problem with some common sense, and not just, you know, throwing more police officers or more resources behind something such as this $1.25 invasion of a bus charge.
Council President, can I clarify something, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and your question about reducing officers was related to?
You have the floor, City Manager, excuse me, the audio, City Manager, can you start over the audio cutout?
Yeah, I can, I apologize for just jumping in, but quick clarification, your question about reducing Fax officers was related to the COVID incident, correct? Or were you asking in general if we have reduced officers prior to COVID? Because at one time, Fax was paying for about 18 officers, and then in January, that number went down from 18 to 12. We, Director Barfield answered your question relative to the COVID incident, and we have not reduced officers since COVID came, because we do believe that, that we will get back to our ridership.
City Manager, to your question, I think you just clarified for me, so what I assumed was that, since we reduced ridership or passengers during COVID, that we would also reduce the amount of officers covering our Transportation Department, so it looks like you went from 18 to 12, and?
We went from 18 to 12 at the beginning of January, so that was prior to COVID. We have decided not to reduce Fax officers now, because we do believe we're going to hit a new norm soon, and increase our capacity to more than 10 passengers per bus.
Okay, and City Manager, on my request for the 15,000 calls for service, if you could also tell us which ones, how many of them actually got a police response? I know sometimes we use, people call 911 for everything, but not everything's a priority one call, so just to get us an understanding of, of the 15,000 calls, what percent of those actually got a police officer, you know, response or intervention? Thank you.
You said June 26, correct?
28th. But thank you for being sneaky. Councilmember Kabassi, you have the last word on this item.
No, I just have a clarifying question for the Director, since we're talking about the Fax Unit through PD. Director, so by population, we're the fifth largest city, but by land area, we're number six of the state, so it's a pretty big city. Now, the Fax Officers, the 12 we have, they're not all working at one time, correct? They're staggering shifts?
Right.
So if we were to reduce that number, I'm, I think, through common sense, I would assume it could put us at greater risk if there is a call for service where it's bus, ridership safety, or, or the staff safety, you know, what do you think? You know, what do you think about that?
So I was the one who worked with our two sergeants to come up with the twelve. Because I wanted to make sure that we had coverage for our entire system from five AM to eleven or one AM every day. And again, you know, Saturdays and Sundays, we also run service. So it was important for us to make sure that, working with them, we developed the right schedule. Because I didn't want to cut too much, but I but there was a request to have some additional officers come back into the patrol matrix, which we accommodated. And twelve was the number that worked.
Got it. And I do appreciate that process you went through to do it based on metrics and a discussion. If the council was to vote, and I wouldn't support this, but to vote to reduce that number, would there be a negative impact to the department?
There would be. It would be about driver safety, passenger safety. Look, our fleet of a hundred and twelve vehicles, at peak, ninety-eight of them are on the road. If all ninety-eight are full, e- even during COVID times with ten passengers, there is the abundance of abilities for many things to happen when you have that many passengers on the bus. The fax officers respond to any time our bus is in an accident, whether it's hit or whether we hit something, right? Whether someone slips and falls. No, go ahead.
Right. It was a little bit of a lag. Please continue.
Okay, so our fax officers respond to any accidents. They also respond to, again, situations that occur in and around a bus stop. And that can be, for example, there was a domestic issue the other day, I think it was Thursday afternoon at Courthouse Park, that called for not only our officers to respond, but it was so close to the sheriff's office that they actually walked out the door. So they respond to those kinds of things too. And they handled the situation. They were able to peacefully solve it. But we also have those folks who have a number of mental issues out there and sometimes need hospitalization. And they are the ones who respond to those calls. They try to figure them out. They try to help them to the best of their ability. And if needed be, then they're put on a fifty-one fifty hold. That's the reality of who we serve every single day.
And I'm also hearing from the police department, which will be included in your tray memo, that a hundred percent of those calls for service that come in are answered by PD. They do respond.
I would like to add one more thing, and it's secondary to the safety aspect, but there's also an efficiency aspect. So when that incident happens on or near a bus, it often causes the the bus to stop to deal with the situation. So a prompt response to to clear the incident, whatever it may be, an accident, a disturbance on the bus, that response is critical to getting the buses back on on in service and on time. So there's an efficiency portion of the equation as well.
Thank you, Director. One last piece. A fair point was made, you know, if your department is paying for these units, we want to make sure that when you call, the fax unit's available. Now, there may be times when they have to go and assist within their call, but I want to make sure if we only have so many units running at one time during peak hours where there's ninety-eight buses running in the city and a fax unit rolls on the scene to provide help to the passengers and the and the staff, will Fresno PD units come and also help out with those calls as well?
If needed, if needed.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bitterfield, you have the floor.
Yeah, so Greg, I want to just follow up. Are you having problems with people evading the fare?
No, fare evasion, the whole concept of free bus went away when we put fare boxes on BRT. Every now and then, every now and then, someone will try to get on without paying. And again, we'll dispatch a supervisor, but that is not the norm anymore.
Okay, and so putting the the box in the in the bus is what changed that?
Yes, and we we stopped rear door boarding, because that's where all of our problems were happening. Rear door, somebody would come on with the the biggest bag of recyclables you can think of, which is against our cargo policy. It'd probably be leaking and dripping all over the place. And then they quickly go to the backseat. And the driver would not be made aware of that individual until he or she departed.
Okay, because, you know, I I'm just concerned when, you know, we say we're criminalizing poverty because people are avoiding the fare. I don't think that's accurate. I mean, I think we're criminalizing criminality, criminal behavior when you're avoiding a fare. I mean, what do we say to the people who do pay their fare every time and do so? I mean, are we to say that, well, okay, the city of Fresno is not going to require it if you don't want to pay it? I mean, I think we need to be consistent, and if there's a fare, people need to pay it. And if you evade it, you're you're committing a crime. So I think we need to acknowledge that. I mean, I think the city of Fresno does everything it can to help people with these fares. I mean, we help students with these fares. I'm fully in support of that all the time. We want to be helpful to people who need the bus system. Buses are very important. Public transportation is very important for large numbers of our population. I'm fully in support of that, but I don't think we want to dismiss those who want to evade the fare. So anyway, thank you, Greg. You do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director. And I would just like to point out, I know we're not in the police budget yet, but since your department funds two million dollars of the police budget, I'd like to point out a couple of kudos to you. One is you went from eighteen officers to twelve, and the world hasn't ended, and and our buses are still safe. Two, you dealt with the fare box without having to have a law enforcement solution to it. Those are two very important things that the public should know and that you should be given credit for solving without, you know, the fire alarms going off across the city, that the world's going to end because we've decided to utilize resources differently while still maintaining public safety and the ridership of your buses and the clients that you serve, you know, on track. So thank you for solving those two big issues. And the past would have simply been more sworn officers, that I think the credit to the police chief, he's been able to redirect to patrol and service calls. So thank you, Director, for problem solving those two things for us.
Well, look, I can't take all the credit. I need to, again, say thank you to the five hundred employees that work for the department. A lot of their input I rely on every single day, whether it's that frontline driver or that mechanic or some of the smart people that are behind me that helped create this budget presentation. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And now we'll go to public comment. Jonas, you are now unmuted. You have three minutes to address the council on the Fresno, City of Fresno's fax department budget.
Good morning, council members. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Greg, first of all, for running all the buses during the COVID nineteen. My name is Jonas Paulos. I advocate for our severely damaged homeless veterans and their PTSD. Yes, COVID nineteen, we took a hit. I'm all for safety. It's good that, you know, we follow CDC guidelines. At the same token, Esmeralda actually asked all my questions. Yes, City College, let's, we have twelve percent homeless students. I got that data because my son goes to school there. So when we talk about poverty, we need to help poverty. I want those twelve percent into graduation, into jobs. And you're doing a wonderful job. You know what I do, actually. And thank you for giving me those tokens in the past. And you know what I'm telling you, with COVID nineteen, we need to keep that veteran transportation home. Thank you, Miguel, for asking that. Because you know what? They are devastated in that home. They're not treated well, and I'm not welcome in there. They called me mentally ill for advocating for these veterans. And I filed a complaint with the Department of Justice, and they're going to be dealt with because they don't have no business calling me that out of my name. A lot of people have been calling me out of my name. And it's sad to see that during the meeting also. It's very hurtful. These people need to be dealt with. And I just want to tell you, let's keep City College going, and let's keep the veteran home transportation going because they suffered a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Matthew. Can you?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and good morning, council members, and good morning, Director Barfield. Thank you, Greg, for your clear and concise budget. I have used my fax in the past to go from District Two to District Three to then also District Five that same day. Though I would love to, as we continue our conversations, oh, forgive me, I did not introduce myself, but Matthew Gilling with Inspiration Transportation. So as we continue our conversations, Greg, I would love to let you know some of my thoughts in regards to how how that, my fax can play into the our last mile conversations. And as Councilwoman Soria has mentioned, I do believe that Bitwise could be a good strategic partner in regards to tech within the transportation space. As I have emailed a few of the council members this morning, I think that they may be able to be a very good partner in regards to these virtual meetings and the maintaining the sanctity of these meetings. So, Director Barfield, thank you very much for everything that you're doing with fax, and thank you, council members.
Thank you, Matthew. Next person is Carolina.
Yes, I would like to thank my district council member, one, Soria, for her questioning and for everything that she gave during this moment, and Miguel as well. We have two perfect examples of how policing in D needs to change. And I would like to first suggest that our city council members, along with Fresno Unified, who announced that their teachers will be receiving anti-racism training. They gave it a different name, so you feel comfortable. However, the city council needs to understand anti-racism and how a dollar twenty-five, in fact, is criminalizing and has historically people of color, and that the transit system has historically also criminalized overall people of color. And I would like for you guys to understand it so that people like Womack Kwan doesn't roll her eyes when asked for the data. It's really important that we don't repeat rhetoric from Blue Lives Matters and other people that are not understanding this moment in time. I really hope our council member is committed to learning. It's unbelievable that the response to what additional training do police officers have for what we know are mental health problems is that they're old and they have served for a long time, and we talk. Unbelievable. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next person is Lisa Flores. You have been unmuted.
Good morning, Greg. First off, I want to talk about this fare evasion. It's a really, technically, it's a really small amount in the whole budget of your transit. So I don't know why people are harping on fare evasions, because if you just leave it be, it's not a big deal. It really isn't. I used to review your plans for transit for giving the city of Fresno both state and federal money, and the fare evasions was really the last thing I ever looked for. Also, too, it seems like you're having to use two point one million dollars for duplication of services. If you cut one supervisor even at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, imagine what you can do. You could actually offer differential pay to solve your labor issues. You could actually subsidize some childcare to get your people back to work. I mean, there are ways of doing things. Also, too, what is the game plan if if we're all put in shelter in place in November? Will there be free transit available as people may not be working anymore and may see a reduction in their income, but they still have to go to grocery shopping and doctors? What's that plan? And also, too, can Handy Ride expand their transportation regarding people taking their doggies, their small little dogs, under thirty-five pounds in a crate to the dog park? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. The next person is Jen Rojas.
Yes, hi. Thank you. My name's Jennifer Rojas. I work with Reservados Unidos. I help coordinate a youth group there. And a large part of our youth group rely on the city bus to get to and from places, even to and from our programs at Varios Unidos. And have called for more accessible experience when riding the bus. One, which was already mentioned, Ryan, being able to have a bus pass to our young people is very, very important. But not only to just college students, but also pushing it for high school students. And the other part that our youth have been asking for is that they demand a increase to bus routes that are going out to the west side. Our students in the west side oftentimes have trouble making it to our programs that are usually after school, right, in the afternoon, or having to find a bus, I mean, find an alternative route home because of the the limited bus routes that are in the west side. And we continue to to hear time and time again that our response to safety is policing. And now we're hearing that even more here in the discussion about having police fax cops respond to mental and medical health issues. And we would just like to continue to push you to to reimagine what that means, what safety means. And if they are responding to these things, we should have mental professionals respond to to the mental health case. Should have medical professionals responding to those medical situations. And instead, put that money that are going currently to to fund these police officers to those locations, to fund accessibility for our bus routes for our young people in Fresno. So I just want to continue to challenge all of you to reimagine. Safety and safety does not always have to mean police. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Anthony Woodward.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, council member. And my name is Matthew Woodward. I am just here kind of as a City College student. And I definitely want to thank all the council members for strongly saying that they want to continue the bus pass program and also, well, through the through everything that's been going on. I also just wanted to say I strongly agree with what Esmeralda Soria said about trying to potentially increase Measure C. I don't know what the feasibility of doing that right now in this economic climate is. But obviously, there's like a ton of things you could do. You could, I think, top of the list, just based on the conversations today, would be free transit for the for the first, the entire city. Because fare evasion, at least just going after people like that, that definitely criminalizes poverty to a degree, regardless of what certain council members might say. But anyway, that's kind of my my piece.
Next person is Cesar Casamayor. You have three minutes to address council. All right, Cesar, can you hear us? All right, we're going to go to the next person. Jonathan McAllister, you are unmuted. Go ahead and address council.
Hello, my name is Jonathan. I live in Fresno. I'm a local resident in Fresno, California. And I just want to say that we should fund the police and kill all niggers and maggots. Thank you.
All right, we apologize for that disruption, but you can't block idiots from speaking publicly. All right, we are now done with public comment. We'll move on to the next budget item. The next budget item is the Fire Department for the City of Fresno. City manager, if the Fire Department chief is ready, you will have the floor.
So she is zooming in from a remote location. Oh, there you are. Hi, Chief.
Hello.
And Mike Eddie for me, too, please. Great, good job. Thank you. I say, Chief, as soon as we have your staff in here, I'll let you know, and then you can begin your presentation.
Thank you.
City manager, just for reference for the council and the public, we will complete the Fire Department's budget presentation before lunch, and we'll take on the police budget at one thirty this afternoon.
Okay, great.
Lunchtime to work on any kinks that we have with the police department's IT. And we all allow lunchtime to work out any kinks that we have with the police department's uh IT.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Our chief, you have the floor.
Good morning, council president, council members. Thank you. Uh, would like to do is provide you an overview and some primary responsibilities of our department. Uh, talk about the budget a little bit and then some comments and and perspective. And then we'll go into an explanation of uh overtime and shift replacement overtime. And then open it up for comments or questions that you may have, okay? Uh, our organizational chart uh is just a quick snapshot of what that looks like. There you go. We have five divisions, operations, prevention, support services, our training division, our personnel, investigation division, and then our business and fiscal services. Three of those divisions are oversight is provided by a deputy chief. Uh, the personnel investigations division, I currently am overseeing that as well. Uh, we we are having a challenge to get another admin B C and then we have a civilian, uh Mike Getty, who's there. Overseas our business and fiscal services. So our primary responsibilities. Next slide. Okay, operations division. This division is responsible for fire, medical, hazardous materials, water rescue, urban search and rescue, emergency responses throughout the city, the airport, the garden fire protection district, and through our automatic aid agreements with Fresno County, North Central and Clovis Fire Departments, as well as our mutual aid agreements outside the um the county with state. Fire prevention and support services. This is responsible for state mandated fire and life safety inspections, general inspections, plan and sprinkler plan review, five year sprinkler test, and new construction inspections per the state fire code, as well as community outreach programs. The fire training services division is responsible for all annual state required training for two hundred and ninety six sworn safety members and forty four non sworn safety members. The training division also participates in outside fire agency training through multi company drills. We deliver over seventy eight thousand hours of training annually to our fire department members. And this division also is responsible for our recruit academies and our probationary evaluation testing. The personnel and investigations division is responsible for all personnel management, promotional testing processes, work permits, customer complaints, recruit and hiring, internal affairs investigations, background clearances, disciplinary actions, sick leave review, wellness and safety, fire investigations and career development for the department. And then finally, our business and fiscal services division is responsible for the day to day financial operations of the department, including payroll, accounts payable and receivable, general ledger accounting. Also, the division is responsible for budget preparation, grant management, including our uh O E S, grant audits, fire district administration, and works directly with other departments. Next slide. The next slide um is really our operating general fund. Uh, you'll see in the personnel area, this is as of January twenty, these budgets. Excuse me, it was estimated that we'd be about fifty eight point seven million. Um, that was about estimating of about one point seven million over in our purse costs, however, due to COVID and stay at shelter in place orders, we really saw that our members were not taking vacation. They were they were there and so we didn't have a lot more vacancies to fill. And we probably are seeing that number be closer to about a million over. Our non personnel costs are about five point nine million. These are lease payments for our eight year apparatus replacement of about three million. Our county dispatch contract and utilities costs are kind of the larger ticket items in that area. Internal services is four point nine million um for a total of around sixty nine point five. Our authorized positions are three hundred and forty of those. Two hundred and ninety six are sworn safety, twenty are non, uh they're sworn non safety. Those are your fire inspectors and then twenty four civilians. We have nine vacancies, seven of which are sworn safety, two of which are sworn non safety, again, two inspectors. Our capital general fund, which is um down below is, we don't have that. So next slide. Our operating non general fund, this is basically our debt service, state center, community college, training, uh grant, our airport, fire rescue uh contract and our home and security grant. There are six sworn safety members as part of the airport contract within this this uh fund. And I went through those already. And then down the capital non general fund. Really, the largest ticket item here is the construction of Station eighteen, which is estimated around six point nine. That's, that was is moving forward and and then some other uh non personnel uh costs. Now, um, I'd like to offer you some perspective and and some comments from um about the our department. Your fire department is consistently run thin. Uh, this this dark department doesn't have a lot of fluff in its budget. Our staffing levels in every division, we are below our peer cities and in some cases below other city departments in the same category. Over the past six years, uh I have consistently communicated the state of our department and our needs uh for the city's fire department and ask for additional positions, sworn safety and other to bring the department up to a safe and effective level. While we have made progress with this uh council and past councils uh and and administration, the fire department has been and continues to be the lowest staff fire department in the state and the country that serves a similar population and runs the similar call volume that we do. The minimum daily staffing today is the same as it was in nineteen eighty, where we had half the population and we ran half the calls. So essentially, at eighty firefighters on duty today, we have point five five firefighters per thousand. And the state average for a metro department is point eight one. The fire department cannot afford to reduce its minimum daily staffing or firefighting force. Reduction staffing will result in daily closing of fire stations, impacting our citizenry with slower response times, increased risk to firefighter safety, and erasing the organizational progress that has taken place for the last six years. Now, let me take you back to the Cortland incident of two thousand and fifteen, where Captain Dern, there was a near miss there that resulted in the SAR report being completed. The department, again, with the support of this council and and prior and administration, has followed through on the one hundred and sixty nine recommendations in that report. To date, ninety five percent of those recommendations have been completed. Now, I will share just humbly uh through the efforts of the team, that's unprecedented to complete that type of level of work. Usually, these reports end up being a paperweight or collect dust on the shelf. Uh, but this department has really moved forward and made a lot of progress uh through the help of council administration's support. To accomplish that level of success, to change a culture and firefighting practices required the financial investment into our training division, into our training staff, a consistent and relentless training classes, our personal protective equipment improvements, and increased staffing and accountability at our chief officer level. The tragedy of the Cortland incident in two thousand and fifteen was in part a result of taking six apparatus and nineteen firefighters out of the field in two thousand and nine during the recession. The department at that time stopped responding to ten thousand priority two medical calls. The training budget was cut, resulting in computer based training instead of hands on. And the hiring stopped for seven years, which meant there were no recruit schools or no new firefighters hired. This resulted in complacency and disillusionment uh in in our in our practices and um the outcome was part of the the result of that. I'll briefly mention our other depart- divisions. The prevention division. The fire inspectors proactively inspect businesses per the state fire code. This division currently has two vacancies at the fire inspector position. There is a projected revenue stream for these inspections, for plan review, for new construction inspections, including money back guarantee. And the department uh needs the appropriate staff to complete those inspections. Additionally, the current staff uh is able to complete all of the state mandated inspections on an annual basis. But there's approximately fourteen thousand other inspection, general inspections, that we probably can get to maybe fifty percent. Uh, therefore, we're not proactively really looking to reduce fire loss or safety issues. The administrative staff is not back to its pre recession levels. We consistently are asking our people to do more, sometimes the work of two or three other positions. Our capital maintenance, training and other budget areas are lean. While we have higher expenses for repairing and exceeding what we usually are allotted due to prevailing wage and unexpected repairs at our aging fire stations. For example, we have a two hundred and fifty six thousand dollar line item for our maintenance and repair of facilities. I'll give you an example of how little that stretches. We had a recent estimate to repair a single fire station bathroom, about a six by ten. This triggered ADA requirements. That resulted in a price tag of a hundred and nine thousand dollars. So you can see very quickly that that money doesn't go very far and it's a very, very small budget for nineteen fire stations and headquarters. Finally, our overtime. We have a minimum daily staffing of eighty firefighters on duty each day. Again, this is the lowest of any peer city or metro department. That requires that we have a button every seat every single day it for our chief officers and our firefighting positions. That results in shift replacement and overtime to fill those vacancies. On average, due to vacation, sick leave, injury, holiday, any type of leave, et cetera, we realize fourteen point five vacancies each day. The base budget assumed the department um would maintain a relief pool of six, six and nine. That means six captains, six engineers and nine firefighters. But through attrition, we have reduced down to today, we are at four, four and three. This results in more shift replacement overtime than was projected. Additionally, we saw in the last ten months or so an increase of injury uh due to a a long term injuries and or illnesses such as cancer that required more shift replacement, I would say, in the last ten months. So let's go to our final slide and we'll walk through shift replacement overtime. What you see in front of you is trying to uh really uh simplify this this discussion. Shift replacement, A, B and C shift, we have eighty people on duty each day. That's two hundred and forty members assigned to three shifts. Um, if you if you added all those together, historically, the two hundred and forty members, we are absent on average of about twenty one to twenty two shifts a year. Again, that's vacation, sick, injury, holiday, et cetera. Those uh numbers of shifts require uh five thousand two hundred and eighty hours of backfilling each year. The cost per shift on average is about to pay the overtime is around a twelve hundred dollars. That results in an unavoidable cost of six point five million to, and that's without a relief pool. So those are, those are numbers that are unavoidable. We're not going to avoid that that number to backfill. The alternative that's that some have discussed is to hire and not and and not have any overtime or that six point five. But to do that, the cost to hire and place people in a relief pool, if you will, so the relief pool will be much higher, like I'm gonna guess around fourteen, sixteen in each rank. That would require every member in the relief pool could fill those shifts. That cost would be over seven million dollars and it would only increase ongoing. It's important to note that you would need to hire fifty three firefighters to create a relief pool sufficient to cover all of the vacancies that are not avoidable on an annual basis. To do that, though, hiring fifty three firefighters, one, it doesn't increase your minimum daily staffing at all. Uh, two, it's, there really isn't another metro department that we are aware of that has a relief pool. No one functions that way. They they function in a way of mandatory hiring for overtime. Three, um, it's outside the M O U and the constant staffing policy to have a relief pool higher than six, six and nine. And then finally, hiring fifty three firefighters would require at least three recruit schools to the tune of about five hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars each, depending on what the hiring requirements were. So if we were trying to cast a wider net and hire people that don't have a experience, you're gonna have a longer um recruit school uh to to secure that many people. So our idea was to have a um, you know, shoot for a middle ground and have some overtime and and a minimal amount of folks in the relief pool, maybe three at each rank or four, uh to have some type of balance. Um, finally, we do have peer city data. We do know what our peer cities look like in in the matrix and in multiple uh categories and then we do have our own call, call data and and staffing model if if you need any of that information. And with that, I will close my report and open it up to any questions.
Fire chief, as usual, thank you for one of the most comprehensive and clear presentations. Um, I find your department to be the most transparent when it comes to providing us a clear review of the operations and your funding gaps. Uh, so thank you for that. With that, we'll go to council members. Um, councilor Soria, you had your hand up.
Thank you, council president. Thank you, chief, for um all that information uh that you provided. It was pretty concise. I just have a few questions. One, going back to the to Fire Station eighteen, excuse me, just for the public's knowledge. Um, can you just let us know what the timeline um for this the station to be open?
Uh, we were estimating it was gonna be eight, March, April of twenty uh twenty one. Uh, they are pouring the foundation, I believe it was last week. So they are making progress, moving moving along quite quickly.
Okay, and then, um, do you guys know what you guys will be doing? Is there a plan in place um for the current location where the firefighters are housed out of? What are we gonna do with that?
I believe it's a city asset now. Uh, they own, they purchased that. Uh, that would be up to administration and council what they plan on doing with that.
Yeah, our goal was to sell that and help help with furnishing uh the new Fire Station eighteen.
Okay, perfect. And then, um, I wanted to ask about uh the safer grant. I know that there was a ti- uh a deadline looming. I don't know if it has passed. What happened with that? I know that in the in a previous council, I had um brought forward a motion to to give direction to apply for it and then um at the time, if we did get it, we would then decide if we wanted to take it, take it up or not. So what happened with that?
Uh, the decision was made based on the economic uh outlook for the city, the to not apply.
So did the deadline already pass?
It did pass.
Okay, I thought, though, it was the direction of the council. Did that change?
Um, Tim, do you wanna, you wanna address this and then I can chime in?
You know, um, uh, city manager, if you could specifically address whether council's direction was ignored.
Um, I would not say that council's direction was ignored, but we took, um, we made a a decision. Um, my office collectively with the mayor's office made a decision not to apply based upon um COVID and everything else um that we had going on. The the hit to the general fund would have been six point six million dollars over a five year period for nine firefighters. And given, at the time, that the council direction came in, it was before COVID, and we were trying to make sure that we were doing everything we can to cut expenses and not take on additional liability and save every job that we could. So we made the decision not to apply.
Why didn't that come back to the council, though? Because there was a direction given by the council, and so it takes me back a little that, given the fact that council had taken action that you guys wouldn't even come back to, at least, one, let us know, and then allow us to make the policy call, given the information that, that you just provided. I just feel that if we're a team, we need to be acting like a team. And it seems like our, our direction wasn't respected. And I get, I get the, the economic circumstances and the fact that we went into COVID. But I think regardless of us, had we applied, we, we didn't know if we were gonna get it. I think it would have been, in my opinion, I'm a little frustrated because you should have left it up to the council to determine if we were, in fact, selected, whether we wanted to take on the additional liability that, that you calculated would come from it. So I'm a little frustrated that our, essentially, our direction was ignored.
Our apologies.
Well, how are we gonna fix that? An apology doesn't, you know, revert back to the deadline. It's like, if we give direction as a council, as a policy body, and then you guys just disregard it.
Member Soria, this is unusual times, given what's going on with COVID. And we tried to make that clear before. We also didn't want to apply, receive a grant that we were going to decline and, and have a strained relationship with the granting authority or the agency. And so we made the decision not to, not to apply. And I agree with Tim that, that we apologize if we've upset you, but it's unusual times.
I get it.
Very, very hectic with COVID. I mean, we're having to make a lot of decisions in a very short period of time over the last eighty-nine or ninety days.
I get that. I just don't want it to be an excuse, given the fact that, you know, we're still in the middle of COVID, and as other things come up, that you guys just ignore and not come back to the council for an additional vote, if you guys needed us to kinda walk back on our position. So I'm, I am, you know, I, I accept the apology, but it doesn't change things. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that.
Learned a lot more about COVID and are better able to manage it within our available time.
And all the other future SAFER grants that we can apply for when we're in a better standing financially.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. But I also know that, you know, you guys wanna do a continuing resolution because we're hopeful that the federal government is gonna step up and fill that gap. And so this wouldn't have been any different, you know? I think that there, we, we would have been able to have the opportunity to make that decision, and you guys pretty much made the decision for us. And so it's a little.
I have to be honest, though, too. I've, I've been asking for direction on other things, too, that you all don't wanna make a decision on, like the fence around the charter officials. And you've wanted me to postpone that without bringing it to council. So we made an executive decision not to apply for the SAFER grant because I did not wanna put the city nor the mayor in the situation to take on another, another $6.6 million worth of debt.
That's a, that's a, not a fair comparison, Wilma. And I don't, and I don't wish to get in a back-and-forth, but it's not a fair comparison. So I'll, I'll move on. I will move on. I will move on. It is my time. I will move on with further questions. Other thing that I wanted to ask, Chief, I know in the past, we talked about kind of bringing some smaller equipment so that we're not having to use our big, I don't know if it, I don't know the difference, the truck.
Yeah.
Remember, we were trying to bring a plan forward. What, what is the status with that? I know that obviously it takes money, but what is this in our plan?
Yeah, we were, the plan to move forward with squads. They are two-person apparatus. They primarily respond to medical emergencies, keeping the engine and truck, which are forty or eighty thousand pound piece of equipment parked longer, saving that resource and having it more readily available to rescues and fires. That squad, we have, we have purchased a squad, we are in the process of purchasing a squad. If we were to have applied for SAFER, that was how we were going to staff it. So we will be, be securing a squad here, I would say, in the next eight months. And then we will have to decide, you know, if we're gonna let it sit, or if we're gonna staff it.
Wow, okay. So how will we let, how will we staff it if we don't have the additional bodies? So would it allow our, our trucks to kind of sit and not be used for those smaller calls, or?
Yeah, we, you know, you could staff it with, if there's folks left in the relief pool, if you wanted to staff it full-time that way, you could staff it with overtime hiring. What we want, we, we don't wanna do is rob Peter to pay Paul. We, you need additional minimum daily staffing to utilize this resource, that's resource. That's the point of, of having these squads. The, part of the impact fee study was to implement, I believe it was nine squads citywide as we build out this, you know, as we grow, and as there's funding available.
That was gonna be my next, next question with the, the, the action that the council took to accept the new fees. I know that we were severely undercharging folks. So where does that put us for at least the filling of one squad? Are we gonna be able to do with those revenues? Or are those, cuz I thought that, we said that those revenues, we wanted them to stay within the fire department, but I don't, I don't know if anyone can remind me of that.
I believe that was the motion. That was not, I was referring to the impact fees. The, there is revenue, we are generating more revenue if we are inspecting properly. But again, I don't know where the, the city has decided to, what to do with that revenue.
You know, I'll have Henry address that. Go ahead, Henry.
Could you, Henry, could, could you clarify for me? When we raised the fire fees, the council made it clear that they wanted those fire fees to go to the fire department to improve staffing. Are you suggesting that a different decision's been made?
No, they are, they are there. But I wanted Henry to kinda paint the picture of what that means. They are there. Can Henry, can Henry have a second? Go ahead, Henry.
He has a floor.
Thank you, Council President. So yes, tho, those new fees that council approved, it's structured, so it will go into the fire department's financial structure. But one thing you need to keep in mind is those new fees that were projected are programmed, were programmed in the last, if you will, general fund estimate. So that last one, which shows roughly about a forty million deficit, it includes those new fees. So that point, I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of.
So they will go to, they will stay in fire, but will probably, they're probably gonna be supplanted. That's what I imagine.
They will be in the department. They will receive it. As far as supplanting, I, I'm not clear what you mean by that term.
Well, will we take out other funds?
No.
Okay, so will they be supplemental to whatever they already, their base kind of general funds that they, they get currently?
Correct.
So we will see, then, in fact, an increase in?
In the fire departments.
Okay.
Well, financial structure.
Well, will we be, will that be enough to cover that squad that we're gonna receive in a few months?
Reality is, in my mind, no, because when you look at the total universe of the general fund, it incorporates a portion that's related to the fire department. So right now, those new fees are embedded in that deficit. So if you add another service, you're adding more costs that then will add to the, potentially to the deficit.
So, Henry, and excuse me, Councilmember Soria for interrupting, but I'm kind of getting, you know, deja vu on. Last year, we increased the police budget by about $20 million, but we didn't add any additional police officers. Right, on paper, we added more money. So are you suggesting that we're gonna, the fire fees are gonna increase the amount of money available to the fire department, but it's not gonna result in more services or more staffing?
No, it's, it's going to, if you will, it's going to help recover the cost it takes to provide those services. The inspecting services, for example. So that was, to me, a main driver to come and increase those fees because in order to, the goal was to, if you will, chew up the cost recovery to those services.
So Fire Chief, will we get more firefighters as a result of giving you millions of dollars more in fire fees?
That is not budgeted that way. No.
I'm gonna have to go back to college and learn, learn math again, cuz I'm not.
That's why I'm confused. Yeah, I, I, I feel like I don't have a, a clear picture. If we are seeing an increase of revenues to cover the fire inspections, we were gonna have to pay for the fire inspections either way. Now we see an increase in the revenues, so wouldn't that increase the budget in order to be able to provide whatever additional staffing we may need?
We're bringing Jane in to help explain.
Let me.
Jane, do you have like a, a picture, kinda drawing, that you can walk us through and, you know?
I wish I had a whiteboard. I wish I had a whiteboard. No, the, when, when the fees were increased, the fees were increased specifically to pay for the inspections because that was, that was the motivation behind, behind those, those fee increases. But understand that the fire department as a whole does not bring in enough revenue to support itself. So all of those revenues will stay in the fire department, and they will go to support the, the inspection function. They were not meant to fund any additional firefighters or any additional fire service because that's not what those fees are supposed to do. And in fact, we can only charge a reasonable fee for the cost of providing the service, which is the inspection. And so that's all we can do. We, we can't charge an extra fee to, to, to pay for more firefighters because that's not a part of the inspection service. And, and so all of those monies will stay in the fire, fire department. But as a whole, and the, and the budget for, for the entire fire department doesn't support itself anyway. And so all those monies will stay there, but it's not going to result in any additional fire service. It will simply pay for the inspection services that it's meant to pay for, and that's why you increase the fee, so, so that it would be, I guess, a full-cost recovery or near full, full-cost recovery, Chief? I think that's how it was presented, okay? And what it would do, then, is lessen the general fund, if you will, the other revenues, from having to pay for that inspection. It, it's, it's not a simple concept, and again, I wish I had a whiteboard.
All right, well, Councilmember Soria does a floor. If she's done, then we can go to Mike Carbasi next.
Just one additional question. Well, before I make my last question, I do wanna figure out this whole squad situation within the budget that we are gonna be approving. So I'm, I'm hopeful that this council, that we can figure out a solution to that with the administration. I know that over the next, over the coming weeks, we're gonna talk about, you know, the services that we provide for, for our residents, and if there's opportunity to restructure, or as we're having conversations of, you know, in terms of public safety, are there other folks more adequately, that are more adequate in responding to certain issues? Like I brought up last, last week, and I brought it up last year, the homeless task force and how in other communities, it's not police responding directly to moving the homeless and getting them the services that they need or connected to. But that is another, like in Long Beach, the, there's the heart, it's a squad of folks that are going out there with mental health folks to try to connect these people and get, get these folks out of the street. So I want this council to really think about that, or think about a different model. And given the fact that we're gonna get these squads, maybe it's a perfect opportunity to pilot something different. So I hope that you guys think about that. Lastly, I just wanted to ask about the, the utility usage. I know that in the last budget, I asked about the increase in utilities. And I know that as a city, we're looking at, at trying to figure out ways to reduce that, being, having more energy efficiency projects. Have you guys done an analysis yet on your guys' departments and facilities? Or something that we're looking at? And then, does the new station incorporate solar and so forth, which will hopefully help, could help offset some of those utility costs?
I believe it does incorporate solar. And yes, we're working with Anklus to evaluate our fire stations and, and headquarters and ability to utilize solar there as well.
We had discussed previously in council, bringing forth an RFQ once it's let out, or, I mean, ready for award, that covers a citywide program, which would include all of the public safety building, as well as parks. And I believe that is out on the street.
I heard, I heard that the deadline was June 10th to be submitted. Can the council get a report on its next council meeting on that?
Sure.
So that we know where, where that's at? And I don't know if any, we have council participation in your guys' process?
We will be following our normal bid evaluation process.
Okay, so if you can give us an update, that would be great.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, before we finish, don't let me forget to ask you a question about homeless task force. Councilmember Soria, you have a good point. I wanna talk about something you said. One more time, in the beginning of your presentation, you said that we are the lowest staff fire department in the state?
We're the lowest staff metro fire department that serves a population that we have, similar to what we have in the Colvin we have in the state, and likely the country.
Okay. So I have a bit of a heightened level of concern on staffing. Part of it is that North Central is a big chunk of my council district, and we're under contract providing services out there. We have the bluff, which is susceptible to high-risk grass fires, which can utilize a lot of our fire, fire department apparatuses if there's a serious incident. So staffing, to me, is really important. Now, I do wanna briefly discuss what Councilmember Soria brought up because if I recall, it was the council meeting back in March, I think, 21st, where it was Councilmember Brettafeld who made the motion, and Councilmember President Arias seconded it. So the opposite's really attracted on this one because of staffing, how important it is. And we did it because we wanted the option to apply for SAFER grant. I'm a new council member, so for me, I just wanna understand better. I'm a bit concerned because we clearly, six to one, supported applying for the grant. And I understand we don't wanna hurt our reputation with the other grant authority, but what's happened is the reputation is gonna be strained between the council and the administration. And it's really important to me, and I know it's important to people in the administration, that we have a good relationship. I don't want that strained. Before I came here, it was pretty strained, and I'm trying to work to undo that, but forgive me. But to me, it's not acceptable to disregard the council's vote. If you, if there's executive action, that's called a veto. There was no veto taken on this action. And I'm, if we're counting on revenue replacement from CARES money, and I hope that we don't spend too much of that money so that we won't be in the red. I know there's some concern about that. We no longer have the option to apply for SAFER grant now, cuz we missed the deadline. If we had followed the council's decision, we could have met that. If the federal government decided to allow revenue replacement, then we would have had nine more firefighters, and we could have been able to get through that. And I'm just gonna give you a quote from the Treasury Secretary regarding the concern about layoffs with, with fire and police. He was asked by Senator Van Holen, and his response, Treasury Secretary's response was, "Well, I've recently provided guidance on the $150 billion we sent to the states, and that they can use that money for police, fire, and first responders without restriction. So I hope there would be no layoffs as a result of that relief. That was our objective." So the mood of the Treasury Secretary and the feds, when it comes to public safety, is very supportive. So if we do get revenue relief, which I hope we do, we can't apply for the SAFER grant anymore. And that's just very frustrating for me. If the chief of staff would like to comment, or anyone? If the Chief of Staff would like to comment or anyone?
Tim, do you wanna address that this time?
Yes, one of the factors I didn't mention going into this is even if we got $40 million of CARES Act for revenue replacement, our five-year forecast shows us being $50 million in the red currently.
Right.
So it would be hard to make that $56 million.
Right. Now, from a fiscal standpoint, if we don't have the money for the grant, I can completely understand that. And that's totally fair. And I I think that uh, uh, you know, Jane brought that point in the in the presentation last week. And I can accept that, but what bothers me is that we no longer have the option at all, because we voted six-one. A unilateral decision was made. I would have preferred a veto, frankly. Um, but this is where we are. And I just, I think that we need to work better at preserving the relationship. Because I think I have a great relationship with the administration. The council needs to have that relationship too. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carbasi. It's Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. Hey, Chief, just wanted to thank you for the presentation. Uh, appreciate the updates you give uh my office with regards to where the fires are occurring. Um, calls for service, and I agree with you that, you know, we 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 are understaffed here in the city of Fresno. And we're gonna have to wrestle with that a little bit down the road. Um, the 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 last thing, because Councilmember Carbasi asked a lot of the questions that I was gonna ask is. And 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 I just wanna put this on the administration's um radar, where, you know, the reason you're seeing this conversation happen is, and and we all understand that we each have our perspective roles and what that looks like. But when the council votes six to one to give direction for a a fiscal matter that affects the decisions and the tough decisions that we have to make here uh on our end, it's important that we have that trust. And and when that happens, um, you usually have council members, rightly so, that wanna put extra conditions, restrictions, and, you know, probably us that at times can make the managerial um of the city's work um difficult. So I I'm not interested in apologies. Um, I'm more interested in ensuring that this doesn't happen. Because I don't want to see a reaction from our body where where we are, you know, kinda going into that lane. But we also need the administration to be respectful. Uh, that was a policy decision that was made. Um, and and like I said, I'm not interested in in apologies. I just wanna make sure that we ensure that that that's very clear. Um, and 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 if we get into the territory of making executive decisions, then that's gonna go both ways. Um, and it's not gonna be good for anybody, right? Because we're in a situation now where that actually took place. And now, because of decision that was given direction wasn't made, now we have to make tougher decisions that on our end, you know, will be a little bit more difficult as policymakers. Um, so I just wanted to put that on the record. Um, I too have a great relationship with all my colleagues with the administration. I wanna keep it that way. Uh, but we need to make sure that we trust each other um with the work that each of our respective bodies have to make. Thank you.
Councilmember Sparsa, you have it for?
Yeah, I'll uh, wanna go to thank the chief. Uh, again, you do a a lot with the, with what is provided to you. Uh, you're monetarily, uh, fiscally, uh, in our budget. Um, you know, I wanna echo the sentiment of my my colleagues. Uh, just in terms of would have loved the opportunity to to apply for the safer grant. Um, you know, we're the, not only the policymaking body, as mentioned by Councilmember Chavez, we're also the uh, the money allocating body, right? And and for me, right, even in spite of a pandemic and a recession, uh, you know, this department is one certainly worth investing in, right? And and having those supplemental resources, we 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 could have potentially uh been awarded. So I wanna go ahead and echo that, that sentiment. The fire department, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief, but when I asked you last year, in last year's budget, I mean, it doesn't uh make a whole lot of sense to be able to sort of add incrementally, right? You add a one sworn uh position, safety position. I mean, it's really, you have to add three in threes, I think, to increase your minimum daily staffing by one. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, this is one of those departments where that incrementalism i- i- is is, you know, has a very little to no impact. You have to be able to increase the minimum daily staffing uh three positions at a time, and safer grant would have been a tremendous opportunity. Um, Chief, when it comes to your vacancies, I think you said, uh, those nine, uh, seven were uh, were safety sworn and two were inspectors?
Correct.
Is that, is that a pretty regular revolving amount of vacancies or or uh you have a trouble filling positions? Or is that uh, or is that just sort of what the circumstance is right now? What's the sort of revolving number?
That's about right. That's about the the attrition rate. Um, when we have vacancies, though, we we can't just have a recruit school for five people. We would have a recruit school for probably a minimum of nine, uh, because it costs, you know, quite a bit of change to to do that. So uh, that's why we are treading down in the relief pool. Originally, it started at six, six, and nine. And and now, well, as of July, it'll be probably three, three, and two.
Okay, so 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 we're not seeing any sort of extraordinary amount of vacancy rates. It's kind of, it's been consistent. There hasn't been too much of an impact.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, uh, that was just my only question. Again, you've been answering a lot of uh, a lot of good questions throughout the course of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Brettafeld, you have it for?
Yes, Chief, I wanna first thank you for you and your department and all that you do to make us safe. Um, I wanna ask you something about the safer grant that we had all talked about. If that had been applied, if we had applied for it as directed by the council, it was my motion seconded by um Council President Arias. What would that have meant if uh to your department if we had gotten that uh passed and accepted?
Uh, we would have increased the staffing um by three on each day. We would have hired nine. Um, and we would have had uh one safety officer, which was one of the last pieces of the START report we haven't fully committed to, uh, completed. And we would have implemented a two-person squad.
Okay, so nine firefighters, a safety officer, and completed the recommendations from the report that you said that's 95% completed. So this, this council uh said we need to move in that direction. Uh, you, I know, have been pushing and fighting to to add more staff. Obviously, you needed. We are down comparative to every other city. And this council took an administrative action, a legislative act, not administrative, a legislative action to apply for that safer grant. Um, and uh, this administration decided not to tell anybody on the city council and just to say, well, we've made a decision not to do that. Uh, that uh usurps the entire role of city government. The entire role of city government. And frankly, an apology from the Chief of Staff means nothing to me. That the Chief of Staff, the mayor, should apologize to every firefighter that works for you. That is now more unsafe because we didn't apply for nine more firefighters. That's where the apology belongs. Uh, in addition to the city council. Uh, council also, as is expressed in some, some gibberish from the administration regarding fees. This council sets the policy. If we want those fees that have been approved and adopted into the fire department budget, I think we all did that with the understanding that firefighters would be hired. The council makes those decisions. Um, they can decide that it goes into the fire department budget and find another way to uh re uh exit those fees for other things. But we decide where that money goes. If we wanna hire firefighters, we should make sure that that is what is done with those funds. Uh, and I certainly supported those fees with the understanding we were gonna help the chief uh hire staff uh so that we are at levels that we need to be. So I want to encourage the council not to be um uh fooled by the double-talk, double-speak, and bureaucratic speak that we get. Uh, if we wanna use those fees for firefighters, that's what we ought to do. Uh, if we've been subsidizing inspection fees before, we can continue to subsidize inspection fees and use those fees, the new fees that are coming in from inspection fees to hire firefighters. That's up to us. That's what we're elected to do. So I think that's what my expectation is. We're gonna hire firefighters. That's what's needed. And we need to do that in consult, in consultation with our fire chief. Uh, lastly, in terms of the fact that the safer grant was ignored, we didn't have the opportunity to hire any firefighters. And the mayor, I guess, his city manager, and I guess the Chief of Staff decided to ignore the legislative action by the city council. The city council during this budget ought to look at the mayor's budget and determine what, how many firefighters we need and start cutting from the mayor's budget to put those uh numbers that we cut into fire. I'm more interested in putting firefighters out there than a bloated uh uh department in the mayor's office. So I think if we're gonna get serious, it's not enough to just be annoyed and irritated about uh uh the administration ignoring council legislative action. Um, I would like to ask the uh city attorney, city attorney, what options are there available for the council when the administration completely violates their duties and ignores legislative action by the city council?
Well, ultimately, the council's authority is over the purse strings. The council controls the budget and funding for each department. It could take action, as you mentioned.
That's it? Is there anything else?
Uh, if it were a specific thing, the council could ask the city attorney to file an action in Superior Court to require uh the administration to perform uh an obligation.
Okay. Well, I just would say to the council that I think when we do deal with this budget, we ought to look at the mayor's budget. And I have no problem cutting uh that department at all and hiring firefighters as they should have done. And I think if we're gonna get serious, uh, that's the message we ought to send. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Emily, to support your idea. We include the city manager's department and apologize after we take the action. Councilmember Carbasi?
Okay, well, I I really do hope, uh, and despite what was just said by the sponsor of the original uh motion from in March, we can move forward, work something out, and not have this happen again. Um, I was gonna mention, Chief, going back to you, um, I forgot to mention another level of my urgency for fire response in in my district, uh, District Two. Um, in the annual report in 2019, in addition to talking about North Central and the the possibility for bad brush fires, which has happened before, um, stations north of Shaw had an effective firefighting force effectiveness rating of 60% in 2019. So it's another reason why I am concerned. This is not a criticism on the department. We're, we had, the resources are what they are. It's challenging. So we we really need to increase our our forces, and that's why I support, I supported the safer grant. Um, homeless task force. Um, I I'm glad that we're gonna start having this discussion about homeless task force. I I would like you to be involved if we're talking about using the fire department, any component of that. Um, I think Long Beach has done that, and I understand that, but there still is a safety issue. Um, and I I hope this is one of the issues that that former council member Oliver Baines's committee looks at and comes up with reforms. Because I'm I'm interested in 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 a solution, but I don't wanna just be hasty and do something at the risk to the public. Um, last Friday, unfortunately, there was a tragic shooting in East Central Fresno um in a homeless in camp along the uh freeway. So the risk to a social worker going unseen, while we should have social workers, there still is a risk. Unfortunately, it's unpredictable. We have to plan for the worst-case scenario. So I don't want our firefighter being at risk too, because they don't have uh protective equipment um from someone that has a gun. So um I hope that you will be involved, and you're interested in being involved in that discussion.
Just a, just a quick note on the Long Beach. Um, I I have looked into the Long Beach um heat. I think it's called heat or.
Heart, heart.
Heart, thank you. Um, they uh, they are paramedics, which is a little bit different. We used to have a paramedic program in in the department, but those are paramedics and and they can um do some other things that EMTs, which is what our staff is, um, can do. Um, I I would enjoy being a part of that conversation. Um, the, there is an issue, a concern of we we don't have protective equipment when it comes to uh body armor. That's something we've applied for in grants and other opportunities. But um, you know, we'll just have to have the discussion and and see if it's the right fit to have fire involved in that. And and if so, to what level?
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You, councilmembers. Um, Chief, I do have my set of questions around this. Um, can you walk me through the the total amount of the safer grant? What would it have been if we would have received it over multiple years?
Um, the safer grant. It would have been about a million dollars the first year. Um, and that would include the drill school. Uh, and then it would have been, by the time you got to year five, it'll have been a 1.5 ongoing, the cost for nine new positions.
So it was 6.6 million over the first five years. And and Jane went over that in on Tuesday's presentation.
Federal money or the match?
Pardon me?
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you, same measure, but I want to, one clarity, how much money at the federal level do we leave on the table by not applying for it?
Oh, well, um, I'm gonna estimate around a million dollars a year, at least, or a million, million and a half.
Thank you.
Mike, Mike, do you happen to have that, Mike Getty, our budget?
We're, we're looking at it in here. Go ahead, Mike.
Morning, Council Mike Getty, business manager, Fire Department. Um, as far as a safer grant, they reimburse us at 75% the first year, 75% the second year, and 35% of cost the third year. So if we're looking at a cost of normally one and a half million a year, we're looking at 75% of that number the first year, uh, 75% the second year, and 35% the third year.
Thank you. Fire Chief, since we didn't receive the safer grant, what's your plan? And how are you gonna fund the final um recommendations being adopted from the report?
We are really on on hold. We, we have um submitted some recommendations to utilize CARES funny, money to improve some communications. Uh, that is one, one piece that we would like to finish in the START report. The safety officer, we have our training staff kind of play double duty during the day. If they're not involved in a training drill or an assignment, then they can peel off from what they're doing and run out to a fire call and 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 be the safety officer. However, that is, isn't efficient after, let's say, 5:30 at night. So then we have a extra battalion chief respond to the call.
Um, so at this point, the full implementation of the recommendations is on hold?
Yes.
Until when?
Until funding's available.
When do you plan to recommend funding, request to implement the full report?
Well, we've been doing that every year at budget. We've asked for a safety officer in the last three years.
So city manager, is is there gonna be a recommendation to fully fund those positions in September? Or is your intention that it be a status quo budget for the fire department?
No, it's not our intention um that it be status quo for the fire department. But at, as soon as we know the CARE, the CARES dollars and the plan for the 92 million, if there's another relief package that comes to the city, the whole intent of asking for a continuing resolution for three months was to us, for us to take a deeper look at each department once we knew the tru- the true COVID impact. And and Carrie and I have been working for quite some time to check off those uh recommendations from that report. We just have not had the funding. And you all know there's competing needs in every single department.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, Fire Chief, where are you at with medical calls? Is is this still um the thinking that we'll continue to have the fire department respond to medical calls as we have been?
Yeah, yes, I do. Um, we are looking at it opportunity if we could introduce some priority to medical calls back into the system. However, we just aren't at that capacity. We, we're, we're not ready to introduce those yet. If we were to have squads, I think there's a lot more opportunity to to do that.
How, how, how much COVID funding have you submitted for reimbursement already?
I'm gonna say approximately, I don't know, 400, 500,000. Mike, and do you have a a better, a better number?
Uh, labor, about 360,000 and about another 120,000 in uh PPE and sanitation material.
Ha- has your calls for, um, has your fires increased this year compared to last year?
You know, our, our, our fire calls have gone up um quite, almost uh 59% year-to-date from last year. There was a dip in medical calls as soon as COVID started, but uh that has, that has gone back up.
Okay. Um, and then my last question for you, Fire Chief, is, um, as people have talked about reimagining, you know, public safety, and it's been a focus around police um more recently, is it time for us to reimagine um and revisit your deployment model? Is it time for firefighters to go home after their shift every night versus staying overnight for three days?
You know, we, we have looked at, uh, we have had a a deployment model that was once one day on, two days off. Uh, the current two days on, four days off schedule is um been very effective. Uh, I believe you asked the question um last year. Uh, I believe you asked the question, um, last year, uh, about going to twelve-hour shifts. We did the analysis on that as well. Uh, we'd be happy to share that with you. But to, to make that work, you would have to hire eighty firefighters, and that doesn't improve your minimum daily staffing. So, uh, I, I am fine with the current, um, two days on, four days off model. Um, we, we don't have a problem having people, um, sign up to work extra shifts and to fill the vacancies to ensure that we have a button every seat for those eighty positions daily.
Chief, in your analysis, does it give us more financial efficiency? I know we have to have more staff, but is it more cost efficient for us to go to the twelve-hour shift model?
Not at all. Not at all.
It doesn't save us money and it doesn't speed up response times.
It does not. It does not.
Perfect. Well, thank you for looking into that. That's been a conversation from a lot of public safety folks is, you know, is it time for us to, you know, do twelve-hour shifts and send people home versus, you know, having, say, overnight, pay the cost of their overnight plus overtime. With that, Chief, the only other thing I'd, I'd have for this is, you know, when, um, this is more for the city manager and the mayor. During this conversation around a continued resolution, you guys have asked the council for a significant level of trust to allow you to continue spending at the current rate and not require any budget presentations. And that requires a significant amount of trust. We finally reached a compromise where we would get some level of basic, and I would say elementary level budget presentations. You know, elementary level information. And it's, it's dumbfounding to, um, see that you intentionally kept us out of the loop in such a significant decision. Because from my perspective, and me as an individual, when I voted to raise the fees for new construction and inspections, it was on the condition that we wouldn't leave any money on the table at the federal level, that we're going to do what we could to pull federal resources down, state resources before and at the same time as we raised local fees. Um, it's been the same conversation for me around a local tax. Before you go to voters and increase their costs, make sure you pull down as much federal and state money. And, um, I find it completely, um, you know, disappointing is not strong enough. Uh, uh, I am frankly pissed at the fact that this budget, budget hearing for you guys to be upfront with us and that you had to be probed for you to tell us. And quite frankly, I don't think I was the only one that was blindsided today. I think it's fair to say that a lot of other folks on this video call were also blindsided by the unilateral decision that you made in circumventing the council's authority, which is crystal clear on charter. So, um, I would ask that if you've made other decisions, you disclose those decisions and those unilateral decisions in your presentation upfront. You don't wait for us to probe you. You don't wait for the budget, the departments to come forward because as far as.
We did. We shared that on Tuesday when we rolled out, when Jane did the presentation. That's in your PowerPoint.
The city manager, the, the decision and the direction was. City manager, the direction was given in March, not Tuesday. It was given in March. And quite frankly, from you've lost me in the conversation to grant your continued resolution based on this action. So the trust that we've built thus far completely got burned after today's blind side. So we're going to have to spend the next few days trying to rebuild that. But from this point on, I'm not going to sign off on continued resolution unless the departments are fully transparent with where they are on budgets and decisions that we've made and direction that we've given. So, um, with that, I'll go to my council colleagues, Councilwoman Sawyer, you have the floor, then Betterfield, Carbossi, then Esparza.
Council President, I believe I was, uh, first.
Councilmember Esparza, you have it for?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the administration, uh, you know, I think there was a reference about potential future applications. What is, what is, is there a solid timeframe on the next opportunity to apply for such a grant?
Can you answer what the cycle is for the safer grant, please?
I would expect the next one to open up anywhere between, uh, December and March of twenty-one.
December and March of twenty-one, okay.
December of this year, March of twenty-one.
So it's a bit of a ways off. Um, you know, and, and, you know, in light of, uh, us missing this opportunity, obviously, we're not, you know, we've lost the opportunity to sort of tangibly, uh, and cost effectively, uh, you know, bring on nine more positions. But I, I do want to, uh, make a motion, and I hope my colleagues will support, a motion to, uh, add three sworn positions in the fire department. Again, that's, that's doing the bare minimum, right? You know, um, in terms of increasing minimum daily staffing, uh, three rank-specific, uh, firefighters, uh, one on duty, uh, per shift. Uh, so if I can get a second on that motion, and I don't have a funding source yet, maybe we'll, we'll look into COVID dollars. Uh, we'll look at reallocation of our budget, uh, but I would like to get that in the queue, uh, for consideration.
Motion second by Councilor Betterfield and myself and whoever you want. Next. Is that it, Councilmember Esparza?
Thank you. Yes, that'll be it.
All right, Councilmember Betterfield?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion if I could. I'd like to make a motion to remove one million dollars from the, uh, mayor's and city manager's office and move that to the fire department. And then the council will decide what to do with that money in terms of hiring firefighters.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, council, uh, second from Councilmember Esparza. Councilwoman Sawyer, you have the floor. If Councilmember Betterfield's complete.
Yes, thank you.
I wanted to ask, um, just something came to mind. So we were given, you know, the federal relief dollars and trying to figure out how we get created. And if we're reimagining how we provide services to address the homeless encampments and, you know, having fire be a possibility, to be able to, to shift, um, kind of the, the responsibility. Obviously, if there is a need for, for police to respond, like if there's some kind of emergency, you know, I, I, I said that, you know, that's what we should be looking at. But is there an opportunity for us to look at how these federal funds can, can at least help us? And in the short term, look at some cost savings within our general fund because the COVID nineteen would cover this, given the fact that we're, we are trying to, um, make sure that we are halting the spread of COVID by going out and making sure that these, you know, encampments don't get too big and so forth to try to minimize that spread. I don't know if the administration is thinking about that, but I, I want us to get creative and, and use this opportunity again. Rather than need to do the same, provide our services in a different way and utilize and capitalize on the moment that we do have some right now federal dollars that can at least allow us in the, in this remainder fiscal year and a little bit of the next fiscal year, the opportunity to reduce the use of federal, of our general funds because we'd have those COVID nineteen dollars. So I put that out there. I want us to get creative. We have a few weeks, obviously, before the vote on the continuing, the continuing resolution. I don't know where it will land. It may be a case where the council will have to approve its own budget. But I, I really want to hear from you, Jane, and let's continue to have this conversation to figure out, um, how we can, can do that.
All right, council. If that's it, Councilmember Carbossi has the floor.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, I'm pretty disappointed myself in what's happened, um, in the breakdown with a decision that was disregarded by the council. But I, I don't want us to take continuing resolution off the table. Um, I really ask my colleagues to keep an open mind. These are still really unprecedented times, uh, fiscally for our city. And we still have a responsibility to pass a balanced budget, uh, meet the needs of our residents by continuing to provide access to core city services at adequate levels. Um, let's not be reactive. I, I'm pretty upset. But let's be even keeled. Let's move forward and we can take the high road. And I think this council should do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carbossi. With that, we're going to go to public comment. You will get a minute to address accounts on public comment. And then we're going to end the session and come back after lunch for the police budget. Uh, Lisa Flores, you have a minute to address the council.
Okay, here's the questions I have. Um, what is the fire department's expected impact with the second wave of COVID? How is that going to hit you financially? And do you need more money? I'm also very distressed that, um, the department is not only underfunded, but that the city's council is, um, city staff is, um, basically willfully disobedience to the direct, direction of the council. If you don't like doing your job, then quit. Also too, there is an opportunity for us to take some of the bloat out of the police department and give it to those people that actually do, do a positive impact to the community, which is the fire department. And I thank you for saving my life. Um, and how hard would it be for the potential, if there's a potential layoff in police officers, um, how hard would it be to transfer them over to become firefighters? Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Ivanka. Ivanka, you are now unmeeded and allowed to address the council for a minute.
Thank you, uh, Chief Donas. The first thing I just want to say is, um, these are really dire numbers and fire does not discriminate by district. So this really needs to be looked at completely together. Um, all the districts and what we all need. Um, and a lot of the older communities, my concern is the bigger picture of climate change and how hot fires are. I come from Northern California, Sonoma Lake and Mendocino Counties. And also, what is it that the council can do to actually look at and focus on how to become compliant with the amount of fire stations, um, per household or per square footage, whoever is the actual amount that would be, um, considered the correct amount? And also, I do agree with the motions you guys have come together in night today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person is Carolina, Garza Deluna. You are unmeeded. Have a minute to address the council.
Yes, I want to thank the council for how they've responded, and I hope that we will see a follow-through. Thank you to Chief Donas. I want to ask that Chief Donas, please consider and be a leader in looking into the Sunnyvale Police Department and the police chief, who is more than willing to speak about, uh, public safety officers versus police officers. In Sunnyvale, California, for example, the roles of police officer and firefighter are combined. Sunnyvale's basic training includes a twenty-six police academy week, eighteen weeks of police field training, twelve-week fire academy and six weeks of EMS. And they have a hundred and thousand population, which is different from Fresno. However, there are full, partial and nominal integration models. And perhaps the homeless task force is where we can start. But we are having a hard time reimagining safety. You do not always answer by police force. And we have to really be creative. And I hope, um, Chief, that you will join us.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Kimberly McCoy. Uh, Kimberly, you are unmeeded.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Kimberly McCoy, Fresno Building Healthy Communities Project Director. As I listen to the city council meetings this morning and hear the presentation from the fire department, I am very upset and troubled that the city refused to go after a safe grant that the, under the direction of the city council to provide more firefighters for this department. This department is underfunded, and this is the opportunity for us to move more funds to this department and other departments like infrastructure and Parks Department. Like other people have said and made comments, safe, safety is not always responded by police. Uh, we have our fire department who responds. And, um, I just think that, um, I support the measures, the motions that were made today, especially the motion to take one million dollars from the mayor's budget and move it over to the fire department to provide additional staffers for this department. Thank you.
Thank you. And that ends our public comment for today. Um, Chief Donas, um, I do want to personally apologize, um, to you for this budget experience is not something that none of us expected. And, um, hopefully we can avoid this kind of experience, um, for the future department presentations. Thank you for your time and for being fully transparent and honest in your assessments. Thank you. We'll see you after lunch at one thirty.
Thank you.